Madam Clerk, please follow the rule, please.
Counsel President Robert J. Sylvia.
Here.
Vice President Paul M. Roddick.
Here.
Counselor Terry Flynn.
Here.
Counselor Henry F. Lombardi, Jr.
Here.
Counselor M. Teresa Santos.
Here.
Counselor Dennis B. Toronto.
Here.
Counselor Barbara A. Von Willis.
Here.
Do we have a quorum, Mr. President?
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, please join us in the pleasure of...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, reliving justice to all.
Play ball. Okay, before we get started, I just want to take a minute to thank the Vice President and my colleagues for filling in for me in the last couple of meetings. About three weeks ago, I had emergency eye surgery, and basically I've been confined to a house. It's the second time I've been out for the last three weeks because I was confined. So I just wanted to take that opportunity to not only thank them for filling in at the council meeting, but there are the tasks that I have, you know, as the President to do, and they filled in for me. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank them. So, all right, with that, 5:30, executive session pursuant to provisions of RIGL, Sections 4246-2, 4246-4, and 4246-5A, personnel, planning, and zoning board interviews, collective bargaining, police and IAFF union, and five, land acquisition. Now, I'm going to make an announcement. All the applicants for the planning board, which would be William Nash, Jr., Art Weber, John Schumow, Michael Fenton, and Anton Viveras, and zoning board Andrew Bacon and Lawrence Frank. Interviews have been notified in writing that this discussion interview may be held in open session. Now, it's going to be up to you. If you want your interview to be in open session, it'll be in open session. If you want it in executive session, it can be in executive session. We're going to accommodate everybody. You know, we go out of our way to try to change things periodically. Things that we've been doing for years that have worked to accommodate people and accommodate the feelings of some people, and we end up ourselves sometimes with a lot of work on our hands to do this. But it's, in all fairness, most recently, in fact, in my absence, the solicitor found out through the open government and through the Attorney General's office that people could be interviewed for committees in executive session. So, having said that, in executive session, for those of you that are not aware of that, it's just with the council people by yourself. In open session, anyone can sit in the room while you're being interviewed. So, we're going to leave that up to you, how you want to do it. And I think the fair way to do it is say, I'll just ask a...
Well, Mr. President, what I would suggest, since it's been noticed for executive session, all the applicants have a right to request that their interview be held in open session.
Okay.
And we did receive that request from at least two of the applicants.
Okay.
So, rather than having them choose, you just ask them whether, if they want to have their interview held in open session, to let us know so we can handle the procedure more efficiently.
Speaking of procedure, I thought last meeting we discussed that we're going to keep it the same until there was further discussion on it. All of a sudden, it's in executive session. So, council voted to keep it the same last meeting, so if you guys want to go against what the council voted, I'm not doing that.
I'm...
I'm just telling you.
I didn't set it up, so.
That was a motion, and I seconded it.
Okay, if that was a motion, seconded, what's, any conversation on that?
Yes, can I just, I just got to air my feelings because it's bothering me. One, the council voted on it last meeting. Two, keep it the same way it is until there's further discussion on it because we're down two people on the planning board. And secondly, my personal feelings is if Peter says that it's okay to be in executive session, that's fine. I will never have any part of that because I think it needs to be transparent. And I think that I don't like it behind closed doors. I just, perception to me, perception is everything. And perception is that when you're appointing people behind closed doors, and it's a small town, everybody knows everybody, right? But it looks like it could, it could take on the perception of, hey, you know, they do that behind closed doors, it's a done deal, I'll have no part of that. I'll recuse myself from that.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Counsel Lombardi.
So, just to be clear, I tend to agree with Paul. I'd like to see it in open session. I thought that was the way we were going to do it when we made that motion. This, what's happening here is an unintended consequence of the best intentions of not to embarrass, wanting to embarrass anyone publicly, like one. And number two, so that there was an even playing field, so that the other candidates weren't sitting in the same room while we were asking questions of candidates from each board in front of them, so that they could get a perception of what the questions were and how the other candidates would ask, answering them. That's what the whole idea was behind that. I totally understand it. But, at the end of the day, I'm beginning to realize, and myself, this is my personal feeling, that I think I'm tired of worrying about people's feelings. We're going to be out here in public, open session, and let's put it out there for everybody. I said the same thing about how we vote, too, when somebody wanted to do it by ballot. I'm going to vote in public, and I'm going to stand on my own feet and rely on my vote and let anybody see how I voted, whether they like it or not. So, at the end of the day, that's how I feel about it. I tend to agree with Paul. We voted last week, two weeks ago, to do this, and we've been doing it in the past. We want to go revisit it some other time, that's fine. But I think, again, that this council asked for it last week, and that's the way we should do it.
Thank you. Counsel Lombardi.
Yeah, I just want to clarify how this all started, actually, and Counsel Lombardi has alluded to it. One of the things that it was observed was, was that the, those in the audience could hear the answers to the questions that were asked. That was not the problem. Problem really was when counselors themselves up here asked questions. They had personal questions they wanted to ask, and they had to ask every candidate. And the candidates sitting out there could actually see the reaction of the counselors. That was the point, was to, as Counsel Lombardi has said, keep it an even playing field. I don't have any problem with how we're going forward. I just want people to understand that if you're the first candidate, you kind of get a good look at what's going on up here. But if you're the fourth candidate or the fifth candidate, you've had a lot better advantage than the others, and I don't think that's fair. However, I'll go along with whatever. I do agree that this got unbelievably complicated, much more so than ever was intended, and I'd be happy to back off as a result.
Any other conversation?
Mr. President?
Counsel Santos.
Thank you, sir. I just have one question. Do we have to follow the questions that have been handed to us, or can we ask our own questions?
That's the problem.
We, we, everyone has to be asked the same questions. Is that right, Madam HR Manager? So, now that the questions are asked, I mean, that's the way it should be. That's the way, we've always done it. We're getting into an era here on this council that, you know, we're starting to change things. You know, it's working, things have worked for a long time like this. Now all of a sudden, we have a few residents that want to change things. And I'll tell you, I'm really not in favor. Change is good. Change is good. When we find out we're doing something wrong, change is good. But when we find out we're doing something right, and we've done something right for a long time, I think that we should stand by that, my feelings. Now, I have a question for you, Mr. Solicitor.
Yes.
Because if, and I'm in agreement, I've always been in agreement with the open, with the open session.
Yep. It's the council's prerogative, if you decide that you now want to hold them all in open session, then you would just need to make a motion to amend the agenda. This is based on my discussion with the Attorney General's Office.
Okay.
Today. Just make a motion to amend the agenda to indicate that you're going to do it in executive session rather than, because you would be voting to go into executive session anyway.
Got you.
So, just make a motion to amend the agenda to do that.
I'm going to make a motion. Counsel Santos.
The reason for my question was, being a Middletowner, old Middletowner, and I'll use old Middletowner, I had...
I didn't say a word.
I was just going to point for you. I'd like to ask questions regarding what Middletown was like, if anybody knows anything about that. That was my question relating to past Middletown. What Middletown was like? Does anybody know?
Counsel Santos. In the past, we've asked, historically, every time we've done these interviews, and we've done a lot of them, some together, we've always asked the same questions of every person. And that's the way it should be. Unless, unless, somebody can tell me differently, but you know, that's the way it should be.
All of my, my.
Okay. Now, I'm going to make a motion to amend the agenda that all the interviews will be done in open session. Any further conversation? Hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, I'll interview, I'll entertain a motion to begin the sedentary.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Madam HR, do you have an order to bring these people up? Let's start, let's start with the planning board.
You can call them up.
Madam HR, please talk into the mic. And then that other mic, that other mic, the small mic, maybe you want to put it over there on that table over there, so wherever it be an interview can be heard. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Cassandra, would you like the list?
Yes, please.
Okay, we're going to leave it up to you. Let's do the planning board first, okay?
Okay. I'm just going to ring them as I have them. Mr. William Nash?
Hey, do you hear her?
No.
No. Is that on?
Is that on, that mic on?
Hello.
You can hear. Now, we're going to have to ask you, Madam HR, to speak up a little bit.
I will do that.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Nash, how are you?
Good evening. I'm well, thank you.
Good.
Hi, Bill.
What experience do you have that would qualify you to be the candidate for the planning board?
So, I am an existing member of the planning board now. I've been on for three years. And I previously was the administrative officer for the planning board in the town of Warren for nine years, in addition to being the building official there at the same time and the zoning officer at the same time. And I previously was employed here in the town of Middletown for 10 years.
Why do you want to be on the planning board?
So, I am on the planning board already. Glad to be there. If I recall my previous answer, when I was first appointed, it's because I'm at the point in my life where I'm ready to give back to my community. My experience is such that land use is important to me in the town that I grew up in, and it's time for me to give back. So, I've enjoyed my three years on the board up to this point.
Regular meetings typically take place on the second Wednesday of each month in the evening, and they start at 6:00 PM. Special meetings are called on as needed. Are you available to attend them?
Yes, and I believe I, my attendance is pretty, pretty good.
What are your feelings regarding development around Middletown's watershed areas?
So, they are sensitive areas, you know, and they're sensitive areas, and we need to be conscious of the rules and regulations that are in place. You know, I'm a big rules person. The rules and regs that govern the development of land are such that we need to follow them. And deviating from them could put the town in a liable position. So, again, my background is in, is in the enforcement of it or the regulation of it, the administration of it. So, I'm respectful of the laws. So, as long as development is done within, within the realm of good, safe land practices, and it meets all of the rules and regs, in addition to the engineering standards that are in place as part of regs and rules and laws, then I'm in favor of it.
What do you see for Middletown's future?
I see very good things for Middletown's future. For the three years that I've been on the planning board, I'm proud to say that we've taken many properties and put them in a position to be improved upon, to reuse them in many cases, all in accordance with the rules and regs, in my eyes.
What do you see as a healthy relationship between the town council and the planning board?
It's like in any relationship, it's a dialogue. It's, like Paul said, where it's a small town, everybody knows everybody. So, I pretty much have a relationship with everybody on the council in some capacity. So, I think it's a, it's an obligation that we all have to reach out and have a legal, obviously not something that's done without a quorum or in a quorum situation. But general communication, I think I've had discussions with just about every council person over, over time, and I think it needs to be an open communicative discussion.
That's all the questions that I have.
Okay. Any comment you would like to make, Mr. Nash?
No, just that I look forward to serving and continuing to serve for three more years on the planning board. I've enjoyed my three years that I've had up to this point. I was unsure with my experience where I would fit in, but I think I fit in pretty well. I, I can't say enough about the staff. Ron, in my experience, is one of the, is the best planner in the state of Rhode Island. I've worked with him when I was an employee here in Middletown. I consulted with him when I was an employee in the town of Warren. And now, working with him, I feel like he's, prepares us the best possible way to help make us, help us make our decisions. So, I'm enjoying that part of it. I'm enjoying helping shape the future of what we do here in Middletown.
Thank you. Okay, next one?
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Mr. Arthur Weber.
Mr. President?
Counsel Lombardi.
I'm going to recuse.
Counsel Lombardi. Madam Clerk, please note Counsel Lombardi is accusing.
What experience do you have that would qualify you to be the candidate for the planning board?
I have about 20 years of experience with the planning board. I started probably in 99 on the planning board. I've been through two comprehensive plans and hundreds of hours of building ordinances, providing advisory opinions with my teammates on the planning board, both for the zoning board and the town council.
Why do you want to be on the planning board?
Well, when I retired from active duty in 1998 from the United States Marine Corps, I wanted to do something as civic support for my town. And I had been a planner several times in my active duty career. I know the value of planning, and I think it's probably one of the most important things we do here. And I think most of the time, Middletown is ahead of the power curve. We don't have too many surprises here.
Regular meetings typically take place the second Wednesday of each month in the evening, and they start at 6:00 PM. Special meetings are called on an as-needed. Are you available to attend them?
Yes, I am.
What are your feelings regarding development around Middletown's watershed area?
Well, I think it's, I'll give you the same answer. They're very sensitive areas. There are rules and regulations that are in place, both at the local and state level, that govern development. Water protect, water protection District One issues, which come before the planning board from time to time, are dealt with with a serious approach. Most times, we go out and do a site visit to see the exact property and what the alteration will be. The watershed is probably one of the most important things we have in our, in our town and in the state.
What do you see for Middletown's future?
Well, I'm a little concerned about Middletown's future because we have people getting older, like Teresa and I, and we have, we have, we have a declining population. So, we need to be paying a lot of attention to where our tax dollars are going to come from. And I think we need to be paying attention to any opportunity we have to increase our commercial base. I see that as something that is very important. But we are paying attention, if you look at tonight's agenda, about our senior citizens. We are finally making some initiatives to take a look at how they're taxed, and most importantly, how they're, if they need it, to have a place to go in an affordable housing initiative.
What do you see as a healthy relationship between the town council and the planning board?
Well, I think, as Bill said, I think I have a relationship with everybody here. There's no hose barred. We tell each other like it is. We ask questions. We try to do the best we can to support the council, particularly when we write ordinances. We've been very, I think, responsive in a good way to fix things that came out of the comp plan. But I think it's important that we're perceived as a team, that we work together on issues to solve things and don't have problems and disassociations where things aren't really working.
That's all the questions.
Mr. Weber, anything you'd like to add?
Well, I think planning is very, very important. Obviously, I've done this for a long time, and I think we've got to be careful about who is appointed to the planning board. I think I, at the last council meeting, talked a little bit about, we need people that are intellectually agile to be able to look at two or three different things at once, weighing the consequences of what's good and what's bad. We need people who come to the planning board without a 65-pound pack of agendas, personal agendas. And when we vote on something, we must consistently apply the principles that Art Bennett taught me and Manny Mello, that our decisions must be in the best interest of this town. There's absolutely no compromise on that. So, I think when we're looking for people, that's my litmus test. If I was sitting up there, that's what I would be looking for.
Thank you.
Thanks, Art.
Mr. John Cuomo?
Schumow.
I apologize.
Mr. C.
Okay.
Good evening, John.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Hi, John.
What experience do you have that would qualify you to be the candidate for the planning board?
Well, I've served a previous three years on the planning board and felt I gave honorable service to it for the future of Middletown and its residents. And I have previous experience, and I've been retired for six years now, but I had previous experience in site locations for chemical companies throughout the United States.
Why do you want to be on the planning board?
Well, as a Middletown resident of 15 years, I know that I'm a rookie at 15 years, but I've been heavily involved in the community. I've been in, I work for the school system, and I also work at the beach, part-time. And I think I've made each place a better place. And for the future of Middletown, I would like to be involved again.
Regular meetings typically take place the second Wednesday of each month in the evening, and they start at 6:00 PM. Special meetings are called on an as-needed basis. Are you available to attend them?
Yes, I am.
What are your feelings regarding development around Middletown's watershed areas?
It's a very sensitive area. It has to be, it's our scariest resource. And I tread very lightly on development, to be quite honest with you. I think all the Ts have to be crossed, the Is have to be dotted, and then I have to step back and look at it again.
What do you see for Middletown's future?
Well, I see a wonderful future, though we do have a situation where housing is very expensive right now for the average mean family. We have a question of affordable housing. We have a question of commercial development. And those two are always conundrums that bang heads. And we have to work our way through it in a meaningful way, with everyone's input and an open and honest dialogue.
What do you see as a healthy relationship between the town council and the planning board?
Well, my, my experience has been collegial. And if I've had any disagreements with anybody, I think I've let them know, and they've been very collegial back to me and work it out. That's, this is an open, this is a democracy. Nothing is behind closed doors. And you state your opinion, and you listen to the other person's opinion, and somehow you work it out.
John, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any comments you'd like to add?
Uh, no, my hearing aids are actually working tonight. I can hear. That's amazing, they work. No, I just want to thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Mr. Michael Fenton. What experience do you have that would qualify you to be the candidate for the planning board?
I worked 38 years at the Naval Undersea Warfare Center. I worked on large projects. Planning was very important in those projects, defining requirements, specifications, things like that. Working with other people, various levels of, of, of people that design and so forth and things like that. So, I, I understand the need for planning, you know, the need for good specifications, the need for being clear about what's going to be done, so.
Why do you want to be on the planning board?
Well, I am retired also. I've, I've been a Middletown resident for 42 years. I'm familiar with the town. I love the town. I like the town the way it is. I have a, I think the town provides me with a decent quality of life. I'd like to keep it that way. I have the time to serve, you know, and give back, so I'd like to have that opportunity to do so.
Regular meetings typically take place the second Wednesday of each month in the evening, and they start at 6:00 PM. Special meetings are called on an as-needed basis. Are you available to attend them?
I am, yes.
What are your feelings regarding development around Middletown's watershed areas?
Well, certainly, the, I've looked at issues related to stormwater runoff and contamination of water supplies and, and looking at the, you know, the contamination of the, of the water, of our coastal water resources and things like that. I, I realized how, how those precious resources can be contaminated if they're not managed properly. And points of pollution, you know, potential sources of, you know, causing pollution and things like that have to be identified. And I think we have to come up with long, plans, whether we can implement them quickly or not, you know. I think we have to identify plans where we have runoff and where these runoffs cause contamination of our water sources, our water resources and supply, drinking resources and coastal resources, so.
What do you see for Middletown's future?
Well, I, I am a little concerned, too, about the, I was looking a little bit into the history of Middletown, and I was looking at population, you know, and I was saying, you know, I was saying that the population of Middletown, you know, now is about the same as it was, you know, when I first started, it was about, you know, when I became a resident 42 years ago. I think the population of Middletown peaked, I think, sometime in, during World War II, when there was a lot of Navy, you know, people around here. But, so, I know, I'm afraid that, you know, like, like one of the applicants said, that the, you know, you can't, you have to grow, you know, to keep relevant, you know, and to keep healthy and things like that. So, I, I think if I see some healthy growth in the town, I think that would be a good thing.
What do you see as a healthy relationship between the town council and the planning board?
Well, I think the, you know, I look at the planning board as, you know, a, you know, a board that's going to look into items or particular things on a very, you know, on a very detailed basis, you know, and provide, you know, and try to get as much information as we can to evaluate the proper way to go on what's before it, okay? Look, and we do have this comprehensive plan that details what our values are, it details what's important to us, and it details a lot of the things that we should be, the criteria we should be looking at when we're evaluating some sort of project that's coming in. And I think we have to provide as much information as we can. Look at those things in detail, see how those new projects come in, how they line up with the criteria that's provided by the, by the plan, and then provide that information to the, to the town council on an advisory position to give them help in making the final decision on which way to go.
Mike, any further comments you'd like to make?
Not specifically, no.
Thank you for applying.
Okay.
Mr. Antone Viveras. What experience do you have that would qualify you to be the candidate for the planning board?
Well, I've been involved in, in politics and what's going on in this town since 1998. In 2001, I joined the Island Watch Dogs as the vice chairman and became chairman in 2003. And I ran for the council. I ran, I've been on the council. I have experience in the, with the comprehensive plan and zoning. I've challenged many people because I didn't feel what they were doing was in the best interest of the town and the people of the town. I feel that on the planning board, zoning board, conservation committee, when a proposal comes to you, you should look at it and decide, does it fit the zoning? If it fits the zoning, then they have a buy right in order to do what they, the development that they want. If it doesn't and they need a special use permit, then I think they should look at the comp plan. The comp plan is a vision, not only a vision of what the town should look like, it's also mandated by law. And there may be times when I may feel that, you know, have a, have a soft spot for somebody, but if the comp plan says that they can't do that in a particular area of town, then I would have to vote to reject it. But my main purpose is to do what I can for the town and to preserve the town for future generations.
I think you started to answer this, but why do you want to be on the planning board?
To help make decisions for the, for the town. Like I say, there's something I, a proposal comes before me, I can check with the, the zoning code of the town as I've seen sitting at the solicitor's desk in many, many, many meetings as a reference, and also the comprehensive plan. And proposals in order to protect the plan must, unless they can show hardship, comply with the comprehensive plan or the zoning.
Regular meetings typically take place the second Wednesday of each month in the evening and they start at 6:00 P.M. Special meetings are called on an as-needed basis. Are you available to attend them?
Yes, matter of fact, I do have a couple of open spots now that I'm not on the council. I have a few more, a few more days that I can put forward, yes.
What are your feelings regarding development around Middletown's watershed areas?
That's been a sore spot with me because many a times proposals come forward and you look at the man, water management being presented by the, whoever's doing the proposal. They don't look at the total effect or the added effect that it has to what is already there. So if you have a capacity of flow in a drainage for 100 gallons a minute and this development is going to add 25 gallons, well, they say, well, 25 gallons. But if it's all, if during the rainstorm, it already is holding 75 or 85 or 100 gallons an hour, that's going to add a negative, have a negative effect and could start to contaminate our water supply.
What do you see for Middletown's future?
Middletown's future. I would like to protect the rural character of Middletown, preserved and not transformed by industrialization. And the town remains a sanctuary from the pressures that affect the industrial cities, a place where development should or should not be kept, should not, not, should not go and can help the town encourage growth, where businesses can thrive on a walkable main street and families can live close to their daily destinations. That farms don't look like a general business in a residential area in which most of the revenue is raised from the auxiliary business rather than agriculture. And they continue to receive the farm tax reduction. That people can buy a house in an area zone residential and have it remain so and not rezone for financial benefits for the town or private developers.
What do you see as a healthy relationship between the town council and the planning board?
I think that both should work towards the betterment of the town and to preserve the town's character and to do what's best for the people and the town as a whole. And should work together for that, for that goal. In my experience with, what I've seen lately, in the early days, not so much, but lately, I think that that's been the goal. Although I'm not too happy with some of the decisions made by some of the boards or committees, but that's in the past and have to move forward and I would like to help to maintain that. And I think I've had a, a good rapport with members of the committees and the boards and the council. And one thing I've always tried to do is if we can agree, we can agree to disagree and move on to the next project. And try not to develop any animosity and if you do, leave it in the parking lot when you come in to do town business.
Thank you, Antone. Any comments you'd like to make? Any additional comments you'd like to make?
Just that I have two children and two grandchildren. And we like the town and we love what's going on. We love the, the ability to have a decent life. And I would like to work towards that goal. There's an old saying, if you can't change the way things are when, when you get here than when you leave, don't make it any worse. And I'd like to at least try to make it better for those who come behind me.
Thank you. Gentlemen, for those of you that applied for the planning board, we are going to make the appointments tonight. Item number 24 on the docket. Item number 24 on the docket. And Madam H.R., we'll start with the zoning board interviews.
Mr. Andrew Bacon.
Good evening.
Why do you want to be on the zoning board?
Well, I was born and raised in this town and I thought it was about time that I gave something back and helped with what's going on. I've been in the construction business my whole life. My father built half of this town, all the schools and everything and he'd probably be happy if I was doing this.
Andy, can you talk into the mic a little bit?
I'd pro, I think he'd be happy that I was doing this. So he never did it. He never had time, but I seem to have time now that I'm retired and I thought it'd be a good thing to give back.
Are you available for meetings?
Yes, I am.
Quality of life. How would you approach? What does it mean to you?
That's a good question. Quality of life. I guess, you know, this town is pretty close-knit and everything is cool, you know, this town is doing well. And I think that we just need to continue what we're doing and plan for the future and hopefully everything will continue the way it is.
Have you ever appeared before the zoning board?
I did many years ago. I put an addition on my house and I needed a variance and I did come before the board and everything went smoothly and, you know, I had the right preparation and everything was good.
What would you like to see Middletown look like in the future?
Well, I'm a farmer at heart, so I like, I kind of like the open space. But, you know, we all need to have housing too, so it's kind of a fine line. I'm not into the big stores anymore that are here now. And like I said, I was here, I've been, lived here my whole life, so, except for seven years in Florida, but born and raised and I kind of like it the way it used to be. It's changed a lot, but I think that with the right planning and the right people on the council, everything could be right.
What is your feeling regarding protecting the watershed areas in the town?
Well, they're definitely important. I mean, you have to, you know, like everybody else has said before me, it's a fine line and there's rules and regulations for the town and also the state and they have to be abide by. And we have to, you know, approach them with caution because watershed areas are very important, you know? We have reservoirs here. We have different things and we need to be careful, you know?
How long have you been a resident of the town?
65 years.
Andy, any, anything you'd like to add?
No, I'm, I'm good, you know.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. I will say one thing, Bob, I'm glad to see you're feeling better.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
And Mr. Lawrence Frank.
Evening.
Good evening, Frank.
Why do you want to be on the zoning board?
I've, as you know, my, had an unsuccessful venture in running for town council, but as a result of that, I was able to walk and talk and knock on over 3,500 doors during my campaign. And I was able to talk to many, many people about their concerns of the town. And chief among them were the development of the town and how they wanted to proceed to not become more commercial but more residential.
Are you available for meetings?
Yes, I am.
Quality of life. How would you approach? What does it mean to you?
I think the quality of life in this town is going to be defined by its residents. I think the town has been neglectful in providing affordable housing for its residents. The comprehensive plan in 2014 called for a housing authority to address that issue. As far as I can tell, that has not been addressed. I think the town needs to address that issue. As you increase the residents in, in the town, you will provide a workforce for businesses that come in here. Both will increase the tax base. The quality of life will increase.
Have you ever appeared before the zoning board?
I have not, though I have had issues that might have appeared before them, but they never got to that point.
What would you like to see Middletown look like in the future?
Getting back to the affordable housing, I would like to see more and more affordable housing, market rate, subsidized housing, communities that are integrated and not economically stratified. I would like to make sure that what has happened in Easton's Point does not happen to any other part of the town.
What is your feeling regarding protecting the watershed areas in the town?
Again, the watershed areas protection will be defined by the development and if the development is allowed to continue as it has, they will be at risk. I would try to make sure that that, those type of developments, particularly in the Atlantic Beach District, are restricted so the water development does not affect them.
And lastly, how long have you been a resident of the town?
I've been a resident of 27 years.
Mr. Frank, would you like to make any additional comments?
I would.
Art Weber of the planning board spoke about volunteers at a recent town council meeting. He said, "You need to have no agenda." Councilwoman Barbara Von Villa spoke later, quote, "I was impressed with what Mr. Weber said about not having an agenda. What we want is people who will look at the rules, look at the regulations, look at the ordinances and go by that. The fact is that the ordinance and laws are there as guidelines and to be followed, not to be abridged." At last week, and last week, speaking at a, at a meeting of the Middletown Democratic Committee, Councilman Rick Lombardi cautioned that those who are members of the zoning board should have no agenda. At the meet, at the town council meeting about a month ago, members of the zoning board were in attendance. One of them said, quote, "I am very pro-development," quote, "I am always going to take a pro-business stand." And here in a very few words is what is wrong with the current zoning board. There is an agenda and it has resulted in decisions that have harmed the community we live in. The very beginning of the Middletown zoning code, Article 1 Purpose, references the Middletown Comprehensive Community Plan. Under purposes of the chapter, it states, "The districts and regulations set forth in this chapter are established in accordance with the Middletown Comprehensive Community Plan for the purpose of promoting the public health, safety, and general welfare of the town. The comprehensive plan is referenced not just once, but four times in this opening section. This is the beginning of the zoning code before anything else is described and as such should be afforded more than casual deference." An example, the planning board did not approve of the construction of a gas station at the corner of East Main Road and Aquidnic Avenue. The zoning board rejected the conclusions of the planning board and granted a special use permit. In explaining that decision, here is what is one member of the zoning board said. "I don't know all the iterations of this project, but what I do know, they're taking a site, a motel. God knows what goes on in that motel. And you've got some people with some money that are coming in trying to run a reputable, reputable business." To say that this decision, to say that this decision-making process for this special use permit was appropriate is questionable. Again, back to the zoning code, 902 special use permits. The zoning board shall hear and decide requests for special use permits in accordance with the terms of this chapter according to the following provisions. Number three, it will be compatible with the comprehensive community plan of the town of Middletown. I have read the zoning code and I have reviewed much of the comprehensive plan. The gas station and probably others are at odds with both the zoning code and the comprehensive plan. Echoing Mark Twain's encouragement to, quote, "Buy land. They're not making it anymore." Councilwoman Teresa Santos wisely observed, "There's only so much land and when it's gone, it's gone. It is the responsibility of this council to require that the use of land benefits the entire community. The zoning board must not, must not be beholden to business interests whose interests rarely have anything to do with maintaining the quality of life that residents of Middletown deserve."
Thank you, Mr. Frank.
Thank you.
All right, the, for the individuals that apply for the zoning board, the appointment's going to be made at item number 25 on the docket tonight. Okay, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to recess open session and reconvene in executive session.
Motion to recess open session and reconvene in executive session.
That motion is second? All in favor?
Aye.
With some correction on this side with the glass I have on, I can see a little bit, the vice president and the crew's been helping me out a lot, so. Public forum, pursuant to Rule 25 of the Rules of the Council, citizens may address the town on one subject only. Said subject or subset of town business neither discussed during the regular meeting nor related to personnel or job performance. Citizens may speak for no longer than five minutes and must submit a public participation form to the council clerk prior to the start of the meeting. All items discussed during this session will not be voter-approved. I know we do have some forms.
Yes, we have two forms.
Okay, number one, Antone Viveras. Antone, come on up to the mic. Five minutes. Start the clock, man.
Antone Viveras, 110 Indian Hill Road. Thank you, Mr. President. It's been bothering me for a while about the attitude that the... In Rhode Island General Laws Title forty-five, Cities and Towns, Chapter twenty-four, Section forty-two, general provisions for special use permits, Item B three states, the towns, "Special use ordinance shall establish criteria for the issuance of each category of special use permit that shall be in conformance with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance of the city or town. Criteria for issuance of special use permit shall be in conformance with both the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance equally. Therefore, the comp plan is not just an advisory document, it's equal to the zoning ordinance." The state had to change from comprehensive plan prevailing to zoning code prevailing because the zoning code is bound to the legal system where the comprehensive plan is not. Making the zoning code prevail keeps the state out of court. "The planning board or commission shall have the sole responsibility for performing all those acts necessary to prepare a comprehensive plan for the municipality in accordance with the provisions of Chapter twenty-two point two of Title forty-five and pursuant to forty-five dash twenty-three dash fifty-one. A planning board or commission shall be empowered by the city or town council by ordinance to adopt, modify, and amend regulations and rules governing land development and subdivision projects within that municipality and to control land development and subdivision projects pursuant to those regulations and rules. The planning board or commission shall also provide for the administration, interpretation, and enforcement of land development and subdivision review, regulations pursuant to forty-five dash twenty-three dash fifty-two." So, the planning board are more than an advisory board. And before I continue, I'd like to give the council some, some information.
Mr. Viveras, you can give those to the clerk. You can give that to the clerk, she'll pass them off to us later.
Okay. Okay, to clarify, it depends upon the type of application submitted to the building officer. One, if the application conforms to the zoning code, the zoning code prevails. You have a by right to build if you are complying with the zoning code. The zoning code is the document used for those zoning board decisions. Two, if the applicant is not in compliance with the zoning code, you need a variance or special use permit. If you require a very, a variance or a special use permit, then the comprehensive plan is the prevailing document for the zoning board's decision. The priority of the comprehensive plan for a special use permit is stipulated in both Rhode Island General Laws and Middletown Co, zoning code. In Rhode Island General Law, Chapter forty-five dash twenty-four, it says that towns must establish criteria for issuance of special use permits, and the special use permit must be in conformance with the purpose, the, the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan. In Chapter one fifty-two of the Middletown zoning ordinance, a special use must be permitted if it meets all five established criteria, one of which states that the use must be compatible with the comprehensive plan. And we're getting a copy of the Chapter fifty-two zoning courts, code, Section nine oh two, nine oh two special use permit. "The zoning board shall hear and decide requests for special use permits in accordance with the terms of this chapter according to the following."
Mr. Viveras, your five minutes is up.
Can I have one more minute, please?
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds. Uh, okay. One, it will not result in a significant diminution of property value in the surrounding area or the distance. Two, it will not create a nuisance in the neighborhood. Three, it will be compatible with the comprehensive plan of the town of Middletown. Four, that the granting of a special use permit will not be detrimental to or substantially or permanently injure the appropriate use of property in the surrounding areas or distance. And five, that the granting of a special use permit will not result in hazardous conditions or conditions in the, to the public health, safety, or welfare.
Thank you, Mr. Viveras.
So, both are not just advisory.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Paul Croce, Paul. Name and address, please.
Paul Croce, one thirty Tuckaman Avenue. This has nothing to do with the planning board. Mr. President, members of the council, a number of residents have raised this topic to me from a variety of directions, and I have one simple question for you. Is there anything the town council can do to bring in another cable company to compete with Cox? That's it.
Oh, that's awesome.
I think everybody would agree with that. Thank you, Paul. Okay, all right, there's no other forms for the open forum. I'm going to ask the Vice President, could you read item number three while I take my way down there?
Yes. Number three, memorandum of Council President Sylvia in reference to citation of appreciation, Lieutenant Michael Faria, interim police chief.
Second.
Motion to receive said communication and begin said presentation. Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, these are the, the fun things, and Mike, the flowers are not for you, all right? They're for the people that had to endure you for the last couple of months. I just want to invite his, Mike's wife up. Nicole, can you come on up, please?
Bring the kids.
Bring the kids up. In fact, all the family come up. I see Mike Senior's here tonight. Mike, come on up.
Larry?
Yes.
Nicole, these are for you. I think, I think it's very important that we recognize a gentleman who went above and beyond. He stepped up to a challenge in, a challenge in, uh...
Call of...
Call of duty. We have official citation from him from the council. I also have one from, for, on a personal note, to Chief Michael Faria, interim police chief, Middletown Police Department, Middletown, Rhode Island. Dear Mike, on behalf of every resident, business owner, and the entire town council and staff, I would like to say thank you for the outstanding job that you did as our interim police chief. This letter gives me great pride to express how grateful and appreciative we are for your service and to your obvious, unselfish commitment to serve our community. Every single day, members of the Middletown Police Department respond to numerous emergencies and requests for help. While you served as our police chief, you were challenged with the National Grid gas disaster. During this emotionally demanding period, you led the department's efforts and assisted in coordinating our town's efforts with our fire department chief, Peter Ferber, as well as our public works department. It was obvious with every update that I personally received from the town administrator that our town was in competent hands, and I sincerely thank you for that.
All right.
I'm going to ask that the, the chief, who's his first day today, Chief Kewitt, come on up, chief. I'm going to ask that, that you make sure that that gets in his personnel file, and also that this citation from all of us today gets in his personnel file. "To Lieutenant Michael Faria, in recognition of your dedication and service as interim police chief for the town of Middletown, the town councils extend their deepest gratitude and appreciation given this fourth day of March, twenty nineteen." Mike, sincerely, thank you for your job. All right. And I'm sure, I'm sure, Nicole, you went through some trying times with them during this period, but thank you all, and it's a family team effort, and somebody's sitting in that seat, and again, Mike, great job, and thank you all.
Thank you very much. Go. Okay. Motion to act as board of licensed commission?
Second.
And motion is second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, acting as a board of licensed commission, application of MR Ventures LLC, four ninety-nine East Main Road, for a Class BV liquor license to be used at the same premises. Requires advertising for public hearing and notification to a butters. This is new.
Motion to receive application, advertise for public hearing, and notify butters for public hearing to be held on April first, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
Okay, motion is second, reconvene as a town council? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve the consent calendar minus items number five, ten, and eleven.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion is second, approve the consent calendar, minus items number five, items number ten, and items number eleven. Any further conversation? Here or none? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number five, approval of minutes, regular meeting, February nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, to approve said minutes.
Motion to approve said minutes.
Second.
Okay, motion is second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Vice President?
I didn't pull five.
I did.
Dennis did.
Dennis, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I talked to a couple of residents, and they had asked me to pull this off. They had a couple of questions in regards to the, the minutes in the meeting, but one of the things they were just asking in regards to what ends up in the actual minutes that you're taking, that, you know, it doesn't mirror, I tried to explain, it doesn't mirror exactly everything that's said in the meeting. You have guidelines of what needs to end up in the minute, minutes. But some people have said, hey, I've talked and I've looked at the minutes and I don't see what I said in the minutes. So was I accurate in saying we don't include everything in the minutes?
No, we do not.
Okay, can you just talk about that a little bit?
We don't include everything in the minutes.
All right, can you just explain how you do that?
Just the motion.
Madam Clerk, could you grab a mic? Thank you.
It's basically just the general discussion that we include in the minutes. If they want to see the entire section of, say, item number six, okay, they can go online and watch the entire video, but it's just the general discussion is what we include in the motion.
And if something is brought to the state level in regards to what happened in the town meeting, does the town, does the state refer to the video as the legal document, or is it the minutes?
That would be, they would include both.
So, the video is actually considered...
I can say that, that we've had litigation that's gone to the Superior Court where there's been a question of what occurred at a meeting, and I've actually provided a copy of the video and a transcript of what occurred at the meeting to the court, and they would refer to that rather than, rather than the minutes, which is just a summary, they would refer to the, the video and if, if one was available, an actual transcript of what was said from the video.
Okay, so they, they do take the video into consideration then?
Absolutely. And it is an official town record that is, we're required to preserve.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any further conversation? Okay, thank you, Councilor Toronto. Item number ten, application of a special event permit from Elevate Fitness, Beach Fitness, the second beach beginning in May fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, through August nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, Tuesdays and Thursdays, from five thirty AM to seven thirty AM.
Motion to grant said special event permit.
Second.
Give me a motion is second. Councilor Toronto.
Oh, it's me.
Vice President?
Okay, I pulled this one in, and my, my thought process is the same for ten and eleven. I was a little bit apprehensive last year when we first started, last year or the year before, we first started approving, um, uh, fitness camps down the beach. I think it's a great idea, but I have a problem with people making money off the back of the town, on town property. I mean, it just, as I read it, I started thinking about liability, I started thinking about insurance, the permit fees, you know, a hundred bucks, I think they get, it's for ninety days, they get ten dollars a day, it's nine hundred bucks, or for a thousand dollars, I mean, that's a pretty good bargain. And, you know, I think everyone should have the right to, a, a fair living, but, you know, it's, it's on town property, the, the second beach is the, is the jewel of the town. So, I don't know how the rest of the group feels, but my colleagues feel, but, I don't know, I just, I'm on the fence about it. It bothers me that, you know, what if we open that door, so what if everybody wanted to do it? Where does it, where does it, there's another group, number ten, and it's those two, and, I mean, it's early in the morning, it's not really affecting anybody, I get it, it's just the principle of it, so, that's kind of my, my train of thought with, uh...
Any conversation? Councilman.
I just have a question, has the Beach Commission weighed in on this at all?
Um, I don't know. Yeah, I mean, the Beach Commission's charge is really, really, I'm not sure, I look at the Beach Commission's charge, just so you know, is the beautification of the beach, not any policies or anything of the beach. Their charge is beautifying the beach.
I kinda, I kinda have a tendency to agree with you on that a little bit, when does it end? And do we, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask our solicitor this, do we assume any additional liabilities because we're authorizing them to do it? Are we assuming a liability that we don't necessarily should be assuming?
Well, we leave the town, the town, in addition, obviously, the town's own insurance coverage requires anyone holding an event such as this to have their own insurance coverage, which would name the town. So there is adequate insurance coverage for it. The question is, you know, once again, does the town, do you want to get to a point at some point where you are, you know, we have, we have concessions that go out to bid for certain activities there, and, you know, one option, and something to consider as you go down, if, if you're concerned about it, is, is to, to go that route with regard to some of these other activities.
Mr. Brown?
I would just add, beside the, besides the insurance requirement, if there's a water activity, the vendor's responsible for also providing a lifeguard for that event, so we do have some policies in place, so it's not just a, a random event that they're, we, we've taken care of the liability piece as well as not distracting away from our primary responsibility, providing lifeguards to patrons, but if someone does come in with, um, a surfing type event or, you know, yoga on a board or something like that, they, they do have to provide a lifeguard.
But that's different, though, what I'm talking about, Sean, I mean, it's, this is, this is ninety days out of the, out of the summer.
I understand, I'm just addressing the liability issue. We, we have addressed that in our policies.
Okay. Just some thoughts that I had in my mind as I read this, that's all. It's just something doesn't sit right with people money making, making money off the back of the town, I don't, I don't know.
Councilman Body?
Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, but have we had some other groups, like, last year there was something that sticks in my mind, a surfing group, somebody we leased, rented out, Space Two down at the beach, and another group wanted to do something and it kind of conflicted with what they were doing based on the contract, and, I mean, it seems to me there are other groups that have been doing things down there. Can you refresh my memory on that?
The way we organize it is there are zones where, so when this permit comes in, they would be assigned a certain zone at the beach to operate so that we, we separate people, so we don't schedule people...
There was a conflict last year, and we didn't give it to somebody because they were doing the same, similar thing.
It was the Sida Bruzy Surf Event.
Yeah.
It was that and the, the bike race.
It was a camp. It was a camp.
There was a question of whether it conflicted with a, with a concession that had gone out to bid.
Right, and, you know, so I mean, I don't know, I, I kind of agree with Paul, we need to draw the line somewhere, and I don't know if we're making, often something like this, you know?
I, I think part of how this came about originally is, is sort of from a community wellness standpoint, is, uh, these are services that town residents and local people are using, um, they're taking advantage of the beach, and it promotes health and wellness within the community for our residents.
Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, but have we had, um, some other groups, like, last year, there was something that sticks in my mind, about surfing group, uh, somebody we leased, rented out, Space Two down at the beach, and another group wanted to do something, and it kind of conflicted with what they were doing, based on the contract, and, I mean, it seems to me there are other groups that have been doing things down there. Can you refresh my memory on that?
The way we organize it is there are zones where, so when this permit comes in, they would be assigned to certain zone of the beach to operate, so that we, we separate people, so we don't schedule people...
There was a conflict last year, and we didn't give it to somebody because they were doing the same, similar thing.
It was the Sittabruzy Surf Event.
Yeah.
Like, it was that and the, uh, the bike race.
It was a camp. It was a camp.
There was a question of whether it conflicted with a, with a concession that had gone out to bid.
Right, and, you know, so I mean, I don't know, I, I kind of agree with Paul. We need to draw the line somewhere, and I don't know if we're making enough of something like this, you know?
I, I think part of how this came about originally is, is sort of from a community wellness standpoint, is, uh, these are services that town residents and local people are using. Um, they're taking advantage of the beach, and it promotes health and wellness within the community for our residents. Uh, so that would be the, the flip side of this. There's obviously the, the profiteering, um, that takes place, but there's also, um, getting people out, exercising, participating in event at the beach that's organized. Um, and it's not a service that has to be provided by the town or be managed by the town, other than administering, you know, there's space available, the liability, and risk has been managed. Uh, and, and sort of what you've already pointed out, it's early in the morning, it's not conflicting with another activity, so...
So, so here to devil's advocate, if it's a benefit to the community, health and wellness, that you give middle town residents special coverage, they give them reduced rate, maybe do something that benefits the town on that end, sites up in wellness. I mean, think about it, you know, I mean, I get it, health and wellness, and benefits the community and the whole bit, but, you know, it's the town's, it's the town's beach, it's, as Paul says, it's the problem. And, you know, if we're gonna give them the opportunity to do this down there, they're gonna make some money off of it, maybe, uh, maybe middle town residents should get a little break. I wouldn't want a woman to accept that.
It's up to the council. You, you have a, you know, these are prices that have been established by the council, and the special permit process that, that is embedded place. So if we want to change it, then we can certainly, um, do that. If you don't want to approve these, you can certainly not approve the...
Is there anybody here from Elevate Fitness? No?
How about Pulse Fitness?
How about Pulse Fitness?
I'd like to hear from them, because, I mean, I'm on the fence about it, I just, the issue I have with it is, again, the, we open that door.
A question, Mr. President. Has there been any precedent set of having, I know we have a lot of nonprofits that come in and do runs and things on the beach, and the concessions, the profit-making things, they go out to bid. Is there any precedent for this sort of scenario where you've got, you know, a profit-making venture utilizing the beach, not going through a, a town, you know, bid type of situation?
I guess my, my observation there is profit or nonprofit, you're still trying to stay in business, so there's still gonna be a fee, you still need to raise enough money to stay in business. Um, and generally, when you look at the cost, you know, say, a YMCA program and a for-profit, it's, it's, it's gonna be roughly the same.
I guess my point is, they have, most for-profit businesses have their own building, their own location, their own land. This is our land.
But we, we do have, we have people without facilities that, that provide these services. I, I believe there's a woman who provides yoga on Third Beach that...
For a fee?
For a fee.
Okay, so there's precedent.
She, she doesn't have a place of business, so...
So we do do it already?
Yes.
Okay. So is, is council...
I think it's a, I think it's a good point. I think it's something that certainly will, um, you could use some further discussion on down the road, and, uh, but I think it's a good point that you brought up. Okay, just for housekeeping. Item number 10, we, we had a, a motion to grant a special event permit, and it was seconded. Now, all in favor of granting it?
Aye.
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 Okay, opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
So I'm opposed. Promotion carries?
Yep.
Four to three? Okay. Item number 11, application of special event permit from Pulse, Newport, Pulse Beach, food camps at Second Beach and Third Beach, beginning May 1st, 2019, through September 30th, 2019, Monday through Friday, from 5:30 a.m. to 8:30 a.m.
Motion to grant said special event permit.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion is second to grant. Any conversation?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilor Toronto?
Yeah, I just, um, the reason I'm voting for this is, these are really two good businesses. They've been in the town for a number of years. The people who go here, a lot of local folks, they really, really enjoy utilizing the beach and the working out, and, you know, I think we do need to look at it, though, in regards to, has this expanding, because it used to be five people, now there, there are quite a few people down there. So I would recommend that the town take a look at making sure that we're insured, that these companies are insured, and maybe start thinking about, you know, someone else, if two other people start coming, want to have workout camps there. Now, you, you know, Paul, what you're saying, where do you draw the line? But I don't think today's the day to draw the line. I think these are two good companies, but I do think it's something we should look at, but I am voting for it.
Okay.
Okay, um, do we have a motion to grant?
We do.
We have a second on that?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, public care, item number 12, continued from February 4th, 2019, and February 19th, 2019, regular meetings of the council. Public care and advertised, public care remains open, in order to the Town of Middletown, this is the second reading, in order, it's an amendment to the Town Code of the Town of Middletown, Title 15 Land Usages, Chapter 152 Zoning Code, amending the definition of product stand in Section 400 entitled Definitions, and adding definitions for agriculture-related products. Agriculture Operations, farm small, farm large, farm-based retail, farm calf, limited food service, pick your own produce, and winery, brewery, distillery, thereto, Section 602 entitled Schedule of the District Regulations, Uses in Districts, subsection F of Section 703 entitled Accessory Uses in Structures, and Section 722 entitled Farm Promotion Accessory Uses, see attached ordinance.
Okay, Mr. President, I'm gonna recuse myself.
Okay.
Thank you.
Back of the court, please, no. The vice president is recused. Okay.
Public hearing remains open.
Second.
Okay. Public hearing remains open. Now, is anybody here would like to make any comments, any guys to this? Come on up, name an address. How you doing? How are you?
My name is Jason Evans, 129 Mitchell's Lane. Um, I, I think we all agree that the intention of this amendment is, we all want more farmland, it's a great intention, we all want to see farms stick around, we don't want to see developments. But I think there are unfortunately some unintended consequences that will potentially harm neighborhoods and neighbors for the benefit of individual landholders. The amendment seeks to remove the requirement of special use permits for the stated accessory uses. By requiring a special use permit, and, and tell me if I'm wrong, because I, I'm just reading it, and this is what I'm getting from it, um, by requiring a special use permit, the relevant town officials and boards can judge the request based on the location and impact it will have on the surroundings. The possible impacts that are okay on Indian Ave might not be okay on West Main Road, and vice versa. If the amendment moves forward as is, the town will lose its ability to make a judgment based on the specifics of each request. There are a couple specifics that seem to be problematic, problematic to me. Ron cleared up a couple of those that are already in the, that aren't actually changing, which didn't make sense to me. So, the, the short version is, um, the question about product stands, does that need to be a separate building, or is that part of a bigger building? If someone has 100 square feet, that's part of a 2,000 square foot house, does that qualify as a farm stand? Number five, we have livestock sales. So are we talking about breeding operations? Are we breeding cows, are we breeding horses, and then being able to sell them? Um, number 17 is farm-based retail and agricultural-related products. It's extremely vague, could mean anything from plants, to threshers, to even roundup. It's kind of like Agway, but that covers everything Agway has. Is that what we want? Um, my biggest and immediate concerns are number 14 and number 18. Combine these two uses pretty much mean that you could put materials processing yards, such as J&amp;J Materials, in a residential neighborhood, anywhere with over five acres. I don't think that was the intention. Does that mean you could run a rock crusher for 15 hours a day to produce small stones, and then have trucks run 15 hours a day to fill up other trucks with this material? The noises caused by such an operation may not meet the standards of a noise violation, but we all know that the noises caused by such an operation are certainly intolerable to anyone living nearby. This brings us to the enforcement issue. How will the town determine if a use is an accessory use and not the main use? Is it 51% to 49%? Is that enough to be ancillary? Is that based on land use, or is it based on residence? Will the town have access to the farmer's books to make a determination? What if the accessory business does so well that it becomes bigger than the original permitted use? Will the town step in to say that the farmer has to shrink that growing business back to an accessory size? There are too many questions and potential unintended consequences in this amendment to pass it as is. I don't mean to exaggerate the potential problem here, and I'll speak from my own experience. For the past two years, a neighbor has run an ancillary business out of farmland property, and has yet to establish the nursery that was meant to be the primary business. This neighbor has received notices that he is in violation of town ordinances, that the accessory business continues to operate on this property. For a month straight last summer, from 6:00 p.m. until dark, pretty much anytime you'd want to spend some time in your backyard enjoying a summer evening, we heard beep, 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 of his earth-moving equipment, and the sounds of rocks being crushed. We notified the police, and were told that the noise was not over the level set for the noise ordinance. So there we were, with unintended consequences, the rights of one individual making a profit off the land, and no ability to address a newly created problem for the neighbors. I am heartened by the recent decisions to look harder at business development, such as the Pegham Lane subdivision and the Atlantic Beach District. I want to thank the Town Council for its reluctance to rubber stamp these requests, and to allow refill, allow a full review of the impact to each proposed development. The special use permits allow the town to grant permission, which can be taken away, rather than trying to correct something which has been given by right. I hope you agree that the town needs to retain the right to review the uses I have mentioned above through the special use permits, and will not pass the amendment without further changes. I am here to help if I can be of assistance in this revision. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Councilman?
So, I got a, I got a question, maybe Ron can answer this for me. What was the genesis of this? How did it?
Comp.
How did this come about? Was there a, so, let me, let me put it to you like this, so you know where I'm going. Was there a specific incident or incidents where someone was denied an ancillary use? Because I can't recall too many, I can think of one at the top of my head, um, right now, but I, I would like to know why we're going through this, when the system we have has purportedly been working. I can think of two places right now that run a pretty good business, and, uh, you know, they must have gone through some type of vetting process. So, what's the genesis of this, and why are we going through this exercise?
So as I described at the first reading, there's a, actually several sections in Comprehensive Plan that deal with this idea. Um, the idea initiated during the Comprehensive Plan drafting process, through the Comprehensive Plan Committee. Um, it was seen as a, as a positive, potentially a positive, changed the town's regulations to promote the preservation of farms and farmland by allowing ancillary businesses on those farms to provide some, um, additional income. So it initiated through that process, through the Comprehensive Planning process, it ended up being an action item in the Comprehensive Plan adopted by the Town Council, and so the planning board, as it's required to do, implementing the Comprehensive Plan, put it on its list, and it was actually a priority list that the council approved, to draft the ordinance and go through the process of doing that. Um, the process took probably 18 months or so, maybe even longer than that, several public meetings, a couple of public workshops, um, lots of public input. Um, so that's, that's pretty much what happened.
So I mean, my point is, is there an issue, is there a problem? Because I don't see it, and I'm reluctant to, to, to back this.
I wouldn't say that there's...
I think our system's working.
Well, again, I wouldn't say that there's necessarily a problem that we're trying to fix. I think it's, um, a desire to do the best that the town can do to, um, assist farmers in maintaining their farms.
And, and the other thing really quick, um, like, thank you, ma'am, to, to a point that you just brought up regarding stone crushing versus material yard, I think, I believe, solicitor could correct me if I'm wrong, we have an ordinance that specifically covers stone, stone crushing and processing.
That's correct.
We just went through that. Material yards cannot do stone crushing.
Yes, yeah, so that the, the, uh, Section 18 that was cited, um, would not allow that. That would have to be operated only under the gravel processing ordinance.
I just want to ask one question, because, uh, if you are sorting, if you're, you know, clearing land, if you're clearing a couple of acres, and you're sorting out, you're separating the dirt from the stones, it creates a very similar sound.
That's not a stone crushing business.
It, it's not a stone crushing business. I, I understand that, but if you are, yeah, I, I, I see that. I saw the, the farm product processing. So I'm not quite sure, if there's a separate ordinance about it, then that's great.
It's something we address recently, actually.
Okay. And I didn't see that on here, so thank you.
Mr. Piveras?
And over to one ten, it's in her role, take Mr. President and member of council. Uh, Mr. President, I'm, I'm not anti-farming. I just ask everyone to uphold the old of office, opposition that they took when elected or appointed, and uphold the best interests of, of the town. Now, I asked the question, what farmers came forward and asked for this relief, when I was sitting up there? And I was told, none. I said, who's bringing it forward? It was the planning board, the planning department, and the chairman of the planning board at the time that came up to the podium. Nobody asked for it. So why are we doing this? Okay. How much revenue does the town lose due to farm subsidies off their tax assessment? In parchment, it's around 65%. Another question I have to ask, is how many lots qualify for, for farming? Or, does this draft ordinance establish an overlay district which would apply to all parcels in Middletown that comply with the definition of a farm and forest? And will accessory use be allowed by right? Two, I doubt the council is aware of the unintended consequences of approving this zoning change, and the problems of similar proposals has caused for residents and taxpayers of the town apartment. Exeter, and Exeter Council voted to withdraw the ordinance amendment at the recommendation of the Exeter Planning Board. A developer in Exeter purchased residential property to grow hay and operate a wedding event business. In 2016, the Supreme Court upheld the town's ordinance board decision that weddings events are not agriculture. Now, at the zoning board earlier this week, there's, was a proposal for a brewery. I pick up the paper Saturday, and I see where we have a farm that wants a special use permit to install a solar panel. Now, is that gonna be, that electric gonna be used on the farm? Or is that electric credit going to be used to offset the electric bill on one of his other properties? I have to ask, ask, I have to ask these questions. I think, I don't know if you have the, the, the paper, but, uh, it's the Connaught Vineyards, the problems with the Connaught Vineyards. Buses. On some weekends, they estimate 446 cars and 1,800 people. Now, how would anybody, should I say, in town, like to live next to this? And, and the ordinance in, in, the town ordinance rules requires a parking area with over 10 parking spaces must have a dust-free, uh, surface. But they don't want asphalt that parking lot, because they couldn't claim that as farmland. The people who live directly across from Greendale Vineyards and their neighbors deal with the same problems, increased traffic, delivery trucks, and buses, full-sized buses, driving down Wapping Road on a regular... driving down Wapping Road on a regular basis. Has anyone checked with those people? I doubt it. This change would allow similar situations in Middletown. Remember, all the farm property is residential. This change allows manufacturing on residential property where families live. Is that okay with an effort to save farmland and open space? And I know Council Santos is very concerned, but this isn't going to do it. You're going to have companies come in, buy up farms, and offer farmers a price they can't refuse, accept the subsidy, and reap the harvest at the expense of the taxpayers who have to make up the subsidy that they will be getting on that property. The zoning approval process keeps the town residents...
Red lights on. Time's up. I'll give you another minute. Go ahead. Make it fast.
I understand that Attorney Wigan is familiar with the Greendale Winery wedding event times. Is he able to give this council some insight on those unintended consequences and perhaps the problems the residents and the town of Portsmouth and Little Compton and have experienced perhaps causing similar situations in Middletown? So let's not create a problem by attempting to solve a problem that we really don't have and nobody asked for.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Council Santos.
I'd like to ask our planner a question regarding the lane usage, if I may. Under agricultural operations, I know we have a farm that is raising livestock, but where is a dairy farm? Where in Middletown do we have a dairy farm?
I don't know that we do have a dairy farm.
So why is that listed here? We don't have any more dairy farms, they're gone.
What are you referencing?
Okay, one, last paragraph. It's got dairy farm.
Well, it's a permitted use.
We know it's a permitted use, but we don't have any.
Okay.
You could.
You could, though.
You could. You could. Who wants to work? All right. I've asked and answered. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other party that made any comments? Mrs. Paul.
Arlene called, 27 Willow Avenue in Middletown. I've read this extensively, almost to the point that I'm very confused, but I want to say this. I do realize that it does say in here that it doesn't have any impact on existing farms, but my concern is, it does have an impact on what Middletown's farms will look like in the future, and that's what bothers me more than anything. If we allow, and I'm just going to take for an example, they are allowing on a ten-acre farm, so that's on our farm on Green and Avenue, we could have a guest house with eighteen people or more per day. We could have a small café there. So I'm looking at that, and then I went down the street a little bit, and I said, okay, let's go to Mitchell's Lane. Mitchell's Lane has Ventura's farm that could have this, Suz's farm that could have the same thing, Idle Hour Farm that could have the same thing, Welch's Farm, Ashworth's Farm, and Lopes Farm, and that's just on one street. So please, don't tell me it doesn't impact what farming will look like today, as it does today in Middletown, because it certainly will change the overall look of open space and farming in Middletown. The other thing is that all this here has an avenue currently. It has an avenue currently, so you aren't saying no. If this is denied, and I hope it will be, you aren't saying that these things can't happen. What you're saying is that you're not going to make it easier for them to happen. They can go before the zoning board and have a public hearing and have public input. These are our taxpayers. They have a right to have a say in what's going on next door to them. I know in here it says that they have a public hearing, but it's not an open public hear... It is an open public hearing, but it's not the same type of hearing that you would have before the zoning board of review, where you can object to what's going on. This is allowed. This is allowed. Yes, the planning board has things in place to oversee this, but it's allowed. It's allowed by right, and that's where my second biggest objection is to. The zoning board allows this now. Please, please, you're always talking about transparency. Please let the taxpayer in the abut a have the right to say what's next to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Arlene.
Anyone else would like to speak? Okay, see you in there.
Yes. All this is really...
Counselor Flynn.
Thank you. I wasn't quite sure if the anybody only applied to the audience or us as well. You know, I believe that this ordinance is a proactive ordinance. It is to make sure, for Councilor Santos's priority, to make sure that we do retain our farmland, our character, our look. And it is a comp plan mandate that the group, the council at the time, decided that it would be a good idea to make an effort to have some sort of protective ordinance in place. We've got a couple of letters in our file in favor of this ordinance. We've heard many that oppose, and many communities that have opposed something like this, Jamestown, Exeter, Little Compton. And, you know, Arlene J., your points are excellent, that fine-tuning definitives should probably be looked at. Very hard to have an ordinance that has everything. And I want to talk about a couple of things that I did talk to Ron earlier in the last week, I guess it was, and we talked about, there's an impact study going on as we speak for water and traffic across the whole town. You know, we're mostly watershed, and I think that that's something that might want to be taken into consideration, the results of it, before we go forward with any kind of an ordinance. In addition, there's a concept, you know, to Arlene's point about the future look of our town. A concept has come up at planning when I served on the board of this R-80 or R-100 zone that Middletown doesn't have right now. Right now, the farms are, a lot of them are zoned R-30. Probably came about way back when, when times were tight, farm owners needed money, and the banks would not loan without a residential designation. And I think that the ordinance should be looked at in conjunction with maybe a zoning code so that as farmers are assessing their businesses, you know, three, five, 10-year plans, they can't say, oh, well, let's use this agriculture ordinance to start a business, and it'll stay subservient to the main farming business, but then in, you know, year five, it's probably not going to make it by the numbers, and we'll flip and we'll do something else, and that R-30 could be used in detriment to the look of the town. So I would make a motion, but I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time.
I'd like to speak one more time.
Okay.
You can make the motion anytime.
Anytime I want.
So if you feel you have something in your head...
I do.
That you'd like to make a motion on, go right ahead.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion for discussion to, hate to say it, but to return the ordinance to the planning board, to be reviewed with the sustainability in mind, with the two considerations, the results of that impact study that I referenced, and consideration of an R-80 or R-100 zoning concurrent with the ordinance, and of course, work out more details from input from, you know, those who are experiencing issues and have some future thought.
Okay, that's your motion.
That's my motion.
Okay, do we have a second? No second to the motion? Motion fails. Okay. Mr. Viveras, you want to come up again? One minute, and that's it for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just going to suggest, if you're going to look at it again, maybe can amend it so that...
Instead of that, why don't you let us finish the vote on it, and then you can see where we're going.
Well, I'd get it up front instead of... Okay, just to make a proposal, amend it so that the farmer, if they do this, will have to show that they receive fifty-one percent of their revenue from agriculture. If they did not, they lose the subsidy for that year.
Okay, thank you. Council Santos.
Since my name has been brought up a few times tonight regarding that once the land is gone, it's gone forever. I sat down the other day, and approximately I was up to twenty-two dairy farms. I'm saying dairy farms that we had in Middletown. They're gone. Why? It's seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. I've said this before, no vacation, no pension. If a cow was giving a calf out in the barn at three o'clock in the morning, the farmer was out there. So the farms have gone, and what has taken its place? Businesses, houses, or whatever. We've got to keep some of our land in order for our children to see what open space was like. Does anybody remember what West Main Road looked like before the houses were built? It was one big farm from West Main to the shoreline. John F. Chase Farm, where the airport is now. That was all one farm. It's the state air park. It's open land. It's preserved. John, the assigns of John Clark. What is it now? You've got the industrial park, you've got the nursing home, and you've got the Goday School, and you've got Mr. Silver's land that is part of the John Clark Farm. And you've got the third farm, which was the farm on Turner's Road. Gone. They're all gone. What are we going to leave our kids? As farmland? Of farms? What is proposed here tonight? I don't think so. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, any further conversation? Okay, I'm going to read the amended motion into this, and we vote always in the affirmative. So here's the motion. To add Section 400 definitions, paragraph, agricultural products, on the first line after the word "life," add "from a Rhode Island farm." To add under Section 400 definitions, paragraph, agriculture-related products, on the second line after the word "A," add "Rhode Island." Strike after the word "farm," the words by a farmer and/or or his/her family members, or the third line after the word "as," add "food products, beverages." On the sixth line, strike the word "not." On the seventh line, strike the words "producers" on the premises "or." To amend Section 3, Farmers Market, under "A," strike the words Newport County and replace the words with Rhode Island, and under "B," strike the words Newport County and replace with the words Rhode Island. To amend Section D, allow uses by special use permit one, strike the words "not" to exceed two hundred attendees. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
A motion second to close. Any further conversations?
Excuse me, can you vote on that amendment that you just made and then make the motion to close the public hearing?
I could, but I have a problem with that. And my problem is this, we're going to vote on this, isn't this just part of our last and final amendment to endorse?
But any amendments have to be made within the public hearing. That's the problem.
All right, so we have a motion, we have, we'll go back, I'll strike that, we'll go back, and do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Okay, motion to close the public hearing.
Excuse me, wait a minute. I'm in favor, I only have Teresa in favor. And wait a minute, I'll... Wait a minute, that was confusing.
I agree with Council Santos. I'm not exactly sure what that was.
Find out how many are in favor, please raise your hand.
Of the motion.
Of this motion.
To amend.
The amended motion. Okay, how many are in favor, raise your hand.
I'm sorry, I do not understand the, this is not the ordinance. Are we voting on the...
No, we're not voting on it. This is just the amended motion. Amendment to the ordinance.
To make the amendments before you vote on the whole thing.
Yes.
So we're just changing what you're saying.
This is just an amendment to the ordinance. It's not voting on the ordinance, it's just an amendment to it. We'll vote on the ordinance afterwards. So, all those in favor of the amendment to the ordinance signify by raising your hand. Opposed? We have... All right, what do we... Do you have a matter of court?
I have. Barbara and Terry, yes. All others, no.
Okay, all right, to the amendment, that's to the amendment. Okay. Motion to close the public hearing, we have a second. Any further conversation? Hearing done. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Motion to adopt the said ordinance on a second reading as amended. All in favor of adopting this ordinance signify by raising your hand.
Wait a minute now, we just turned down the amendments, didn't we just?
It's an amendment. This is amendment to the ordinance, Council of our Villas, this is the whole ordinance.
I know, but you said to the amended ordinance.
We still have to vote, we still have to vote on the...
You turned down the amendments, but now you're still writing, you're voting on the ordinance as originally presented without the amendments.
Yes, as originally presented.
Okay?
No amendments.
Correct.
Okay? So we'll try it one more time. We have a second. All those in favor of adopting the said ordinance on a second reading signify by raising your hand. Opposed, raise your hand. Opposed. Okay, thank you. All right. Item number thirteen, in ordinance of the town of Middletown, this is the first reading, in ordinance and amendment to the town code Title III, Administration, Section 34 Taxes, Section 34.02, Exemption on Residential Property, see attached ordinance.
Motion to withdraw said ordinance at the request of the administration.
Second.
Okay, motion second to draw said ordinance. Any conversation? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Communication Joseph Cog Jr. with Enclosures, City of Newport, Utilities Department, Water Division, proposed tax increase.
Motion to receive said communication.
Second.
And motion second to receive. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Mr. President, this is a document from the City of Newport Water Department. This is their rate filing that will be, that has been submitted to the Public Utilities Commission, and as a customer of the utility, we're notified of the increases that are proposed. In summary, we're looking at an increase of over ten percent in our water rate and over a thirty percent increase in the rate that we pay for fire hydrants.
Council Lombardi.
So, this is, I have a problem with this, and we're being held hostage by the Newport Water Department pretty much. And I see a letter here from their attorney to the town of Middletown, one is to the Department of Public Works, United States Department of the Navy, and one is to the Town of Portsmouth, where these rate increases are being, going to be brought up to the Public Utilities Commission for approvals. As we look, as we sit back and we look at some of the issues we're addressing in this town today, affordable housing, affordable senior housing, and people's ability to live in this town, every time you turn around, they're reaching into our pockets, whether it's National Grid, whether it's Newport Water Department, every single time you turn around. And I think it's time that somebody fought back, and maybe it's time the town of Middletown led the way. And I would, at the appropriate time, I don't know if this is a motion, Mr. President, or if I can just say that I would like to see the town administration reach out to the Navy and reach out to the Town of Portsmouth, and as a group, go up and aggressively do some research on these rate increases. I think that's a...
Let me just, Mr. Brown, you and I had this conversation. Why don't you fill them in? What do we have, about another two and a half years left on our lease, almost three years left?
No, this is the Water Department. These are water rates.
Okay, I got you.
So this is a little bit different, I think, to Council Lombardi's sort of joint effort. One of the things that's unique about this is that the Navy is a wholesale customer, Portsmouth Water and Fire is a wholesale customer, we're actually a retail... Portsmouth Water and Fire is a wholesale customer. We're actually a retail customer with other Newport residents. So, when it comes to disputing the rate, what you'll see is those two entities will actually be looking to push costs off of the wholesale hotel, wholesale rate onto the retail rate. Our interests aren't necessarily aligned. We actually have, I think, our own unique interest, so an effort to review and potentially intervene on the rate filing would be something that the town would do on its own.
I would, I would like, and again, I don't know if this means a motion. I would like to see us make that, uh, make that attempt. I think whatever it costs us to, to do that, whether it's Peter or whether it's to bring in an expert who's been there and done this before, but it's money well spent, I think.
The first thing to do would be to bring in a rate consultant to take a look at what's been presented to the PUC to determine whether or not they've, uh, actually justified the requested increase and, and where that might be challenged, so.
Vice President.
I, I agree with Rick. I think, um, something needs to be done, but I think if, I think the PUC is gonna approve of their ten percent in, increase. I mean, it's, they've gone thirty, forty percent and they've approved it. So, I don't, I don't wanna throw money at a consultant that, you know, that we're gonna have no say over anyway, and neither is the consultant. The PUC, I agree with you. I wholeheartedly agree with you. It's like Cox Cable, like the man said earlier today. But, we, I just, I can't see bringing a consultant in, and, you know, they're asking for a ten percent increase, which I disagree with, but, and I agree with you, they're constantly reaching into residents' pockets. Something crazy crossed my, my mind, the thought, crazy thought crossed my mind. A lot of them do, I just don't share them, but I'm gonna share this one while I was sitting up here listening to you. How, how does it work, Peter, with Newport Water Department owns the pipes in the ground, right?
Correct. It's part of their system.
They don't own the ground, though, right?
No.
So, maybe we should send them a little message, and, of course, they would just pass it on to the consumer, I guess, but it was a crazy thought, as I'm sitting here saying, charge them rent.
Why not?
You wanna lead the way? You gotta think out of the box a little. I'm not sure, again, they'll just pass it on. But I agree with you. I mean, I just think it's ten percent, I mean, we've all seen them approve thirty, forty percent increases with other utilities. I can't see them denying this, even though I do disagree with it.
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Council Santos and then Council Flynn.
Mr. Brown. Mrs. Benasaw, subject for many years with me. I looked through this document of wasteful paper. Blank sheets of paper. Looking at repairs. Did you happen to pick up anything that would fix that fence along Green End Pond? That has been a disgrace. Do you know what I'm talking about?
I, I do, um.
They've got, they list a number of repairs.
Right, so, so, the, we're talking about the fence located on Green End Avenue at the north end of Green End Pond.
Correct.
So, that was part of the Water Department's capital improvement program. It was an approved expense by the PUC. And at the point in time when there were safety issues identified, um, related to the, uh, the berms around the pond, the money was basically reallocated towards those, those emergency repairs. So, um, I was scheduled to have a meeting with, uh, City Manager Nicholson, which is what, uh, the Council President was referring to on a different matter. Uh, that was an item on our, uh, list of, of issues to continue to discuss. But what the City of Newport Water Department would say is there's so much money, and as certain items come up, they have to prioritize it, and, uh, that fence doesn't become a priority relative to the safety issues associated with the dams and berms around the pond. So, um, but it is, it is a, an active item that we continue to pursue.
Go right ahead.
Have you seen the condition of that fence, Mr. Brown? Somebody is going to get hurt, and they'll have a worse liability on their hands.
Right, and if you look at the capital project, uh, what's actually entailed is expanding the, uh, the side of the road, basically bringing the roadway into the pond so that they have enough land to install a guide rail, um, to keep someone from driving into the pond. But the way the property currently is structured, where the roadway is right against the pond, there is not a way to install a guide rail to keep people from driving off the road into the pond itself.
Thank you.
Council Flynn.
Uh, yes, I'm, I'm gonna have to stand on the same, um, pillar as Council Lombardi, that we are being held hostage. And I was a little concerned as I scanned this report, that they say, um, I'm gonna read you a few quotes, that the new rates are designed to support a total operating revenue requirement of nineteen million and some odd dollars. And then they go on to say, later in the report, that the reason that they are needing a rate increase is because actual consumption has dropped. So, consumption has dropped because rates are high. People are conserving water. And they say, oh, well, in, in response to this, we have, um, put an immediate hold on nonessential spending and delayed capital projects. And then they go on to, I guess they are required by law to explain the, um, in, why they have increases in certain line items. So, they explain their increase in salaries and wages, and they explain their change in the cost of employee benefits, and their increase to retire insurance, and their increase to conference and training expense, and the increase in consultant fees, and the increase in support services contracts. This is gonna be a vicious circle. So, crazy idea. You know, sustainability is the, the buzzword of the day. If Middletown can be sustainable on its own for water, then we can cut the cycle. Otherwise, I, I don't see how. That's all.
I agree. I think, um, I think that everybody brought up a good point about this. I'd like to see, Peter, perhaps, um, you could give us some options. Take the next couple of weeks, think about this. Give us some viable options. Because I agree with spending money for something that we have a shot at. I don't wanna throw money away for nothing just to make a point, because, um, I, I, I agree with the statement that was made earlier. If the PUC wants to hand it out, they're gonna hand it out, and we're not gonna fight the PUC. We all know that, so. Just, maybe you could put some thoughts together, maybe some viable options for us.
We'll do that.
Thank you. Okay, any further conversation? All right. Item number fifteen and sixteen, I'm gonna read these both in together, because I think that they overlap one another. Item number fifteen, this is continue from February fourth. Then February nineteenth, regular meetings, communication from the Council President, senior affordable housing update, and discuss the best course of action.
Motion to receive said communication.
Second.
And motion second to receive. All in favor?
Aye.
And item number sixteen, communication of Council Toronto, request of overview of the procurement of feasibility study, senior housing, and request to reestablish the Senior Affordable Housing Committee.
Motion to receive said communication.
Second.
Okay, motion second to receive. All in favor?
Aye.
I put the, I put item number fifteen on the docket, because I think it's time for us to make a decision. I think, um, we've been pursuing this for quite a while, and if we don't, if we don't etch out, um, a plan now, we're, we're not gonna get to where we wanna be. This takes a while, even when you have a, a plan in ground. I've asked the, I've asked the, um, town administrator to put his thoughts together tonight and give us some viable options. But to continue to kick this can down the road, we'll never see the day we're gonna stick a shovel in the ground to break ground on affordable housing in this town. We have to come to a final decision of exactly what we wanna do and do it. So, Mr. Brown, I know you have a couple of options that you've been working with. You know, for us to spend more money on feasibility studies, for us to take more time on committee meetings, I'm not in favor of that, unless we absolutely need to do it. I, I sincerely believe that if we don't bring this to a head, we're not gonna get to what we want to go. Mr. Brown.
Mr. President, so I, I had attached a memo with some thoughts, uh, dated February fourth. And, uh, just to review the timeline, uh, this, this whole matter started April third, two thousand seventeen, uh, with a memo from yourself regarding the need for affordable senior housing. Um, an executive session in January two thousand eighteen, we did review a proposal from Church Community Housing Corporation. And, and from that meeting, um, you also had a follow-up meeting with Rhode Island Housing regarding options for financing a project. The council then formed an exploratory committee, which met several times between May and October of two thousand and eighteen. That committee basically advised the council to hire a consultant to advise the town about developing affordable senior housing units. And actually, a response to the proposal the council wanted is an action, um, item on the docket beyond, uh, the item that we're talking about right now. What we have found is that it will take two to three years for this project to, um, actualize, um, in the sense of getting a project plan together, and then the two or three years that it will take to get the, uh, financing, um, approved for the project. And I, and I think, just to respond to your request for, for my observations, um, the realities of this, I, I know there's quite a bit of discussion, again, of establishing quote-unquote a housing authority. There are new housing, there are no new housing authorities under the federal government being established. There's, that, that is a thing of the past. I think there's a, a discussion that the town would build and operate its own affordable senior housing project on its own. That's likely not gonna happen, and, um, you know, basically, there's, there's two models. There's, there's one where we have a nonprofit partner, um, the other is a for-profit partner. The nonprofit partner, generally, what we've seen is that they will keep money in the project. It's a long-term investment. They're vested in the community. The for-profit partner, uh, there is more flexibility there, in the sense that you can design a project that, uh, may be more tailored to the town. But the reality there is that a for-profit partner will take money out of the project, and all of the extras or the exceptions that we look for will either be paid for by the taxpayer or through increased rents from the seniors that live there. When it comes to residency, there seems to be another theme, uh, that's discussed through this process of, of wanting to make this exclusive to Middletown residents. I just point out that that criterion, criteria would basically makes us ineligible for, for grants and tax credits. Uh, it does not lend itself to, to getting money from the government. And again, that would put the burden of paying that, for that exception, on the town taxpayer or for seniors. And the last piece is essentially, for this to happen, the town will have to make some sort of investment, whether that's donated property or, or some sort of, uh, payment into the program. Uh, that, that will be a requirement in order to get the, the tax credits that are necessary. The last piece is that, and I, I guess Ron and I have had some other conversations, we, we need at least forty units for the project to be viable, to get another party in here to make it happen. So, um, those, those are some of the points that, that seem to, they, they don't seem to change, um, but we continue to, to sometimes talk about it like we can change those, uh, but those are the realities of these type of projects. You know, I think at the end of the day, we, we continue, what, what seems to make most sense for the community is a nonprofit partner. And, um, and I know there's been discussion about this with, with different members of the council and, and staff. The nonprofit partner that exists within the community is Church Community Housing. They operate housing like this already. Rhode Island is not so large that you're gonna have overlapping nonprofits trying to compete for this. And if it's the council's desire to move, um, then certainly Church Community Housing is someone that we should continue to sit down with, uh, to move the project forward. So, those are the points that I wanted to bring to your attention.
With Church Community. Will we be, can we still retain the land that we used?
That is something we'd have to sit down with. The Solicitor's Office would sit down. I think we would have to give up some control of the land. In order to satisfy the requirements to get the tax credits. But I don't think we would necessarily be required to give the land away. It would be a long-term, for lack of a better term, a trust, a ground lease or something.
Yeah, a ground lease.
Yes.
Because I'm, personally, I'm reluctant to giving any land away. I don't wanna sell any of our land. I don't wanna give any of our land away. That's just my personal feeling. But I'd love to enter a partnership, even if we, it was a long-term lease with a partner like that, where we would retain ownership, and we'd be able to, that piece of the property or the property that we do put up would be considered towards our part of this partnership for this period of time, so that we could retain not only ownership, but that we could get, you know, this going in the direction that we wanted to go in. I think, um, every time that we look at this, it just, to me, it just gets more, you know, unless we went out there and totally funded the project ourselves, I mean, just it gets, it gets, we get deeper and deeper into what I don't wanna see, and I, I don't wanna see us losing any of our land. I, I wanna retain ownership of our land. And that's, again, that's just me. It's just my personal feeling. I think, uh, I think we have an opportunity, perhaps it's with Church Community, who has a, who has a, a long reputation, uh, been around for quite a while, that maybe we could enter into a sort of agreement with somebody like that. Retain ownership, not cost the tax, taxpayer a lot of money, and we could, uh, accomplish what we, we sincerely all want to accomplish. And that's to get some senior affordable housing in here.
But sooner. Sooner.
Yeah.
Right. Well, then, I mean, he's talking about doing it another way. It's three, four years down the line.
I mean, I don't wanna wait three or four years just to do a part, a part of this, wait another three, four years. No, but at the end of the day, you're talking five or six years from now down the road, you know, and, uh, I, I see, you know, community, uh, Church Community, they were just, in fact, wasn't their executive director just retired?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, and, um, they're, uh, they certainly, um, got a lot of accolades from anybody that they've dealt with in the past. I'm not in favor of forming a housing authority. I think that's a waste of money. I think, as you said, Mr. Brown, I think it's a thing of the past. Anybody, any city or town that forms a housing authority has a lot of money to throw away, but doesn't really care about the taxpayer a dollar, because that's far, that's the way I look at it. I think it's a waste of taxpayer money. So, that's where I am with this. I'd love to see us entertain, um, to sit down with the people like, uh, Community, uh, Church Community and see where we could go with this. Any other comments? Vice President.
So, we also have this someone from the state come in, from State Housing. Barbara Fields?
Fields, yes.
And I think, isn't there another avenue there with them?
Funding, but you put the problem. Just funding. It's a funding mechanism. It's all it is. They give you, Rhode Island Housing, they give you access to, you know, low-interest loans.
And the tax-
Well, we would have control of the land and the other things we want. I mean, I think we should not just limit ourselves to looking at one, you know, one, one partner. I really don't. I think if we should, they, we, we have to have her come down again, and I know everybody wants to get this done, so do I, but we've gotta get it done, and we gotta do it right. We can't just, I would never, ever, ever give away town property to somebody like Church Community. And they stood in front of us and told us, if you recall, it's part of the requirement for their funding process, to get their tax credits. And I asked a question, you know, could there be a lease, something like that? No, he said you'd have, Steve Osterguy said you'd have to turn it over to them.
Well, if that's the case-
Not happening. That's what I'm saying. That's why we gotta look at more than just one. We can't look at just limit ourselves to one avenue. Let's explore the avenue, and let's see where it goes.
Look, Rhode Island Housing is not an alternative to Church Community. Rhode Island Housing would provide, potentially provide financing for a project that the town partners with a nonprofit such as Church Community. But we can certainly take a look at the issue of whether or not a long-term ground lease would, would qualify for tax credits. Remember, the, anyone you're working with, they're gonna, they're applying under the same tax credit program, so it's really the, the requirements of that program that would-
Why don't we get them back in the separate one another? Not the same thing. Yes, Council Flynn.
So, I did a little digging, and the City of Newport has done it two ways. They have, they have senior housing, they're fault under the housing authority. They have, they have senior housing that falls under the housing authority, and they have the John Clark School on Mary Street, which was sold off and is being run, I see the housing, it was being run by a private entity. They've done it both ways. But they've retained ownership of certain pieces of property. There's one school, and then some housing that was built. Those come under the housing authority. I'm not in favor of housing authority, just creating another bureaucracy that we could probably handle ourselves. But there's got to be another entity out there that competes with the likes of Church Community, that we could at least explore that avenue. At the end of the day, maybe, maybe we can come to an agreement with Church Community. I am with Paul and with Bobby. I don't want us selling off town assets. If we can come up with a long-term ground lease, and it helps them qualify for their tax credits, and it works for us, and we can get the number of units we need, then that's the route we take. I'm with, I'm with Barbara Von Vellis, I'm with Mrs. Von Vellis about, you know, we need to do it sooner rather than later. Bobby said the same thing. We've been spinning our wheels. To put this back into another committee is crazy. It's crazy. It's committee to death. We need to move forward, and I think to start exploring, either Church Community, or Church Community having to compete with another group, then so be it. But let's get this thing moving forward.
Mr. President?
Councilor Toronto.
Thank you. I'm in agreement with a lot of things that are being said up here. We formed a committee, subcommittee, to take a look at this. It was appointed by the, I recommended that we form a subcommittee. It was approved. We've had several meetings. We brought in experts who talked about this and what our options were. And the first thing they told us was, you need a feasibility consultant who's going to come in and assist you in getting this thing off the ground. We haven't gotten off-ground in ten years. What makes us think we can get it off the ground now? So, I just keep hearing how busy everybody is, and we want to sit here and take on another project like this, which is a marathon. It's not a sprint. There's other options that need to be considered in regards to tax reform for seniors. Maybe public, you know, there are communities that actually seniors are moving in with seniors, and they're getting exemptions for that, tax relief. There are people who actually house seniors. They put their houses up, saying, I'll take housing into consideration. So there are other ways of handling this aging population. It's not just building senior housing. So, I think we do need a subcommittee that will look at all these options and get the public involved. But when it comes to actually creating affordable housing, my, going back and looking at when OXCO lost its certificate in regards certification as for affordable housing, we fell below the radar, and we haven't done anything in ten years to fix this. So we've got to get started. And I just heard six years. I'm not on a six-year plan. I'm not, I'm, I've learned something up here in the last two years. It's called government speed, and it's just molasses. And I didn't sign up for this. We've got to change the way things happen around here. So we've got to find a way to move quickly on this. And my belief, it's getting a feasibility consultant in here who can help us, guide us which way we should go, look at other properties. You say we need fifty units, but we don't even know where we could put these and what buildings. I would think the feasibility consultant can help us and work with a subcommittee. So I would like to make a motion to reestablish the Affordable Housing Subcommittee.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll start with it.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. All in favor of reestablishing a Senior Housing Subcommittee, please raise your hand. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Can voters mail a call?
We have four, three.
What's that?
There's, we have.
What is it?
We have Dennis, Teresa, Paul, and Terry all voted yes.
Okay. Then motion carries. Okay. We'll form another subcommittee in regards to this.
Mr. President?
Councilor Von Vellis.
I'm getting really tired of all of these prolonged committee kinds of things, and we do nothing. We have meetings, and they go on and on and on, and recommendations are made, and we do nothing. We've just been talking about going back to the people that we've talked to before and make a decision right away. I'm thinking in my mind that we started doing this, it says in this memo, April 3rd, 2017. That's when this started, okay? We looked at, and I think you just mentioned, two different people that would come in and talk to us, and then make a decision. June, set a deadline. We're going to make a decision by June 1st meeting, or 2nd meeting, or whatever. And know that you're going to do that, and make it happen. Going on and on and on and on. It's like being on a treadmill forever, and you never get over it, and you never get anything done. And I'm getting darn tired of it.
Mr. President?
Councilor Flynn. Do you have a comment?
Unless Councilor Toronto wanted to respond immediately to that, it might be better.
No, why don't you respond?
Okay. Well, I just had three areas that I had some questions on. So, Sean, your recommendation or your reality is that we must have a nonprofit partner. And you are focused.
What I'm saying is, if, so, you know, we continue to work, use the word affordable. That's what's described. As you bring in a for-profit developer, it will be less affordable.
Correct.
Or, so, either the person who's living there is going to pay for it, or the local taxpayer will pay for it. But someone's going to pay for it. So, that's just one of the realities of this.
So the nonprofit partner, is that a requirement because they qualify under our existing laws of that world for certain financial benefits, or they have certain skills that they would bring to the table?
No, just, you have an option. You can go with a nonprofit or a for-profit. It's either or.
Okay.
It's just you do have a for-profit entity, or there are for-profit entities that will or are, that's their mission, is to provide low, you know, they're in the housing business. That's what they do. They put roofs over people's heads.
So the nonprofit and the for-profit all require some sort of piece of the asset of the land?
They will need some, so, the key is, they need some contribution in order to get the tax credits.
Okay.
If there's not enough people that are, you know, you basically need to demonstrate need. And, you know, the challenge of Middletown is, you know, when you compare us to One Socket or other urban centers, just, you know, Providence or Central Falls, we do not have the same level of need as those, as those population centers. So, again, it's, it's a difficult package to put together.
Okay.
And, and again, a for-profit has to, will pull money out of the deal. They have a different, so, you know, it's a different profit driver. So the community partner is going to be vested in the community mission, the mission of what it's doing. The for-profit has a profit motive. You know, these are all basic concepts, and you just really need to follow the money. And again, someone's going to have to pay for it in order for those other things to come out, so.
Okay. So on the nonprofit question, I guess one of my questions is, can the, can the town have a nonprofit? Not a housing authority, but can it be set up in the legal way it needs to be set up so that the nonprofit is in conjunction with the town, and whatever land agreement they are required to have to get those subsidies actually stay with the town? That's just a question. You don't have to answer it right now, just something for God.
Yeah, I don't have an answer right now.
That's fine.
That's essentially, you're essentially creating a housing authority by doing that. Because someone has to run the operation, someone has to run the facility, and do those things. And so, really, if you're talking about the town setting up and being the nonprofit, you're really talking about setting up a housing authority. And the difficulty is, those housing authorities in the past have been subsidized by the federal government, and they're no longer subsidized. So you're not seeing them being created now because there's no money to support them other than money from the taxpayers.
Okay. So, just trying to get to hurdle that land issue, you know, for everyone, because I think we're all in the same boat with that. So the second issue that I wanted to bring up was, the RFP that we got from the company, Kirk, whoever it was, they had six different elements of their quote. And in looking at it, I'm just wondering, you know, I don't think that, if we could split it up, I don't think that we need to pay them for need, because I think that we agree that there is a need. And I think in the short term, maybe if we could just pay them for funding options and potential locations, we can spend a percentage of the RFP to get started. Just a thought. Maybe for the subcommittee to massage. And the last thing is to take up on, off on Rick's idea, Councilor Lombardi's. You know, I think that profiling other communities that are successful in this type of venture is a good model to search for. Find one that's similar to Middletown, because we do want to be successful. If they're being successful, maybe, you know, we can kind of copy what they've done or the things that might work for Middletown. So those are my three.
Okay. Councilor Toronto.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to, again, talk about the subcommittee. I'm not recommending a subcommittee to slow down the town council in getting things done. So, I still think it's a good idea to bring the housing authority in and other people who might want to talk to us about the right way to move forward. So, Councilwoman Von Vellis, I'm not asking you to slow down. I mean, it came up in 2017 and hasn't been addressed yet, so I appreciate you coming aboard. So, I recommend that we get a subcommittee to assist, because there's a lot of pieces to this, right? When we had our meetings, and we had several meetings, and a lot of local folks, seniors who wanted to participate in this, and I got a lot of feedback. But, the first thing they said is, is this is not a, you know, a race. They go, this is something that's going to take time, and it's something you've got to focus on and do for the next ten years. And we not only have an issue with affordable housing for seniors, we've got an issue with affordable houses for the youth and the young families that we still have to address. This is just addressing our shortcomings in affordable housing. So, I'm not forming a subcommittee to slow it down so we can't get to the council. I'm saying, let us get out there, promote it, because there's another whole piece to this, is educating the community of what we're trying to get accomplished here. Okay? So that's part of the process. And another piece, and putting a long-term roadmap together. So, if people think we're forming a subcommittee to slow things down, they're wrong.
I don't think this was Councilor Von Vellis, that was Councilor Toronto. But I'm going to just stay my ground by saying, I think it's foolish that we're going to file, establish another subcommittee on this. I think we've, we've certainly vetted this on a number of times and a number of occasions. And I think it will slow down the process. And maybe, maybe there should be a time limit established on this subcommittee. Give back to us an X amount of time with some recommendations. And I'm not, I'm not in favor of hiring a consultant to go, to give them $100,000, and then turn around and say, okay, well, you've got this piece of property, and this piece of property you can use. You know what properties we have. Come on. Let's be serious here. We're talking about taxpayer dollars. But maybe, you have any ideas of how long you'd like to have this subcommittee going?
Well, I think it should be put in place to assist with this process over the next few years. I don't think this is something that you have to wait for the subcommittee to come back. We came back to present in 2018. We were told, hold off, we've got an election coming up. We're not going to make any decisions for two to three, we didn't make a decision for months because of the election.
How long do you think, how long do you think the subcommittee?
I think the subcommittee should be in place.
That you could come back with a recommendation.
Well, we gave you a recommendation. We made a recommendation to go out and procure a feasibility consultant, and that there was two options that were available, to form a nonprofit organization or do it ourselves. So, this has already been on the table. So, we're here to vote tonight on a feasibility consultant, and it's twenty-two, about $22,000. And I still think that's the right thing to do. So, I'd say at least six months, but we don't need to, we can come back to you next week with what our recommendation was four months ago.
Okay. All right, we have some people that want to speak. Anton Viveras?
Thank you, Mr. President. Anton Viveras, 110 Indian Hill Road. It seems that every time a proposal is made, we have to look for somebody, that we're all afraid to break new ground. I was on the sub, the original subcommittee, and we had some meetings, and we brought things forward. And I believe that that subcommittee could have something before you in six to eight months. I really do. We had a couple of people there who have done it before and made some recommendations. And I think that the committee could have something before you in six, in six to eight months, have a bona fide, we've got something to work with. Mr. Brown said you need forty, forty units to make it work. You've got a building, and you can put a third floor on if it'll take it. It's good for twenty-eight rooms now. You need another twelve. The thing is, to get, we have to get the lead out of our shoes. And let the committee, form the committee, let them do their work. And I've worked, the committee we had before, I think was willing to do the heavy lifting. And I believe we can have something for you in six to eight months, if you need a...
To me, that's unacceptable, but that's just me, and one vote. Six, eight months, that will turn into twelve months.
Well, if you want a nonprofit, they want it, the concerned island taxpayers will want it.
No, no, no. Just let me finish now, because I certainly listened to you long enough tonight. What I'm trying to say is, is that you were on that subcommittee, other people were on that sub, you know when you started that subcommittee? You know what the date was? How long ago it was?
Was it seventeen?
Yeah. Couple of years now, right?
No.
How long?
No, no.
It's probably was six months.
Yeah.
April 2000.
No. Well, there was, I know what he's talking about, the other committee that was, all right, okay.
Thank you.
Arlene Call, Arlene?
All right. Come before you as the senior director now. Bob, I hear your frustration, Barbara. I know your frustration. We've been doing, we've been working on this as board of directors for over five years. But I don't see the subcommittee working alone. I hope not. I see the subcommittee working with the council, working with the consultant. That's what I see the subcommittee doing, because we'll start spinning wheels if we don't get some more expertise and some more thoughts into it. Now, on the other subject, Church Community is exactly what Paul said, because they stood before me in the Berkeley Peckham Building and told me the exact same thing. And I shook my head, and I'm like, no, I don't think the town will surrender land. And they said, you have to surrender land. That's the way it's done. You can, we can give you a dollar a year, you surrender your land. Maybe they have a different approach now, I don't know. But that's what we were told. The company, the consultant that you have, I read their whole resume. They do affordable senior housing. So if you read that, you'll find out, read the entire thing, it's near the end, that they do that. And so do a lot of other people. So don't, please, limit yourself to, we've waited years for this. Let's get it right. Yes, you need information, you need to make decisions, but you need information before you to make proper decisions. This isn't for the long term. This is people's lives we're talking about. It's not a matter of getting a, an option of one person, one company, one agency, and say, let's run with it. No, let's do it right. People are looking at you. You're a leader. They, we're looking at you for leaders, leadership and guidance. But you need to get the right people in place to give you the information, because you're not experts on it, none of us are. But they are, and that company is one of many people.
I don't think anybody wants to hurry something without any thought for, in regards to this. But, wait a minute. But, I want to get it going, and I don't see this going anyplace. I don't see this going anyplace. And it doesn't hurt to entertain, to bring Community Church, John Doe, or whoever back in here and say, what are your options? What are your requirements? If they say, ownership of the land, see you later. Goodbye. It's over. I don't see why we can't do that. For the life of me, I don't see it. Councilor Lombardi?
Arlene? Could I ask you a question? Two questions. Could I ask you two questions? When you said you, you said with them in the Berkeley Peckham, and they said you have to give up, is it, so, they're giving up control for a dollar a year, so that means it would be a lease, correct?
It was not a lease.
So, no, it's not. So they really, they want us to give up the, the money?
Okay.
Okay.
I wouldn't be favorable.
What's the dollar?
That's what I wanted to know, why is it a dollar?
Are we going to hear from them? This is hearsay.
So, well, I don't...
And hear from them, I mean, they, let them hear.
That's fine, I just wanted to ask you that question. And the other piece of the, the other question I wanted to ask you was, because I know you've talked to him about this, it was Congressman Sicily had indicated that there might be some monies available down the road. Do you know what that is, and what, what type of monies he was talking about? Did he elaborate on it?
I can't. I've talked to David many times, they said they have money coming forward, but I, you haven't seen it, because they're well aware of the senior population throughout the country. Congress is well aware, David and I have talked about this for a couple of years, but no money has been set aside for that, so maybe you need to talk to the delegation and see what's available.
There's no money in the president budget of senior, he knows it. Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. I think it's a great idea, Bob, to bring some, bring them in and, and meet with us. Let's do it. Let's put it on the docket and let them come in. It doesn't have anything to do with the subcommittee, let's just have it done. Bring them in, let's talk to them.
I agree.
I agree. Okay, Lawrence Frank, Lawrence Frank.
Lawrence Frank, 8 O'Donnell Road, Middletown. Mr. Toronto has it exactly right. This is a long-term problem, and it's not just about senior housing. This is a problem that's confronted the town for many, many years. In the recent tax law, the federal government passed something called opportunity zones, which allowed the governor to designate areas of, specific areas of towns as available for investment, tax-advantaged investment from private enterprises, cost the town no money at all. These, these tax-advantaged things allow the, are formed in such a way that funds like hedge funds and others can establish funds for the town, purchase property, lease the property, build the, build, outbuild the housing for the community, and then take tax write-offs going down 10 years. It costs the town nothing, it gets away with having to deal with tax credits, it gets away with having to deal with places, people like church community housing. I think it's something the town needs to look into, it's, it's something that would work for this town, and all it needs is the governor to identify, or the town to identify, an area in the town that the governor could say is an opportunity zone. Okay?
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, any further conversation?
Mr. President?
Council Flynn.
On the subcommittee, I'm wondering if that could be initiated, and maybe we could ask the chair of it to come to us in three months and let us know what they're talking about and what movement they're going to make.
I'd say two months.
I'm in.
Okay. Are we going to, are we going to...
We need a motion to bring in church committee.
We going to, we going to re, refire up the prior subcommittee, or are we going to elect a new subcommittee? Conversation.
Mr. President?
Council Flynn.
I would support the current committee, they, they really, according to the minutes in the Secretary of State site, they just got started in October of la, I mean, August of last year, and I, I think that, that's, okay, so they've had their honeymoon period, it's time to, to show some product.
Well, Council Viveras was on that, wasn't he, at the time?
Correct.
Mr. President?
Whoa, whoa.
I'm sorry.
Who was on that original subcommittee?
I was the chair, Teresa, and Anton.
And Arlene, secretary.
So, well, so I'll entertain a motion to replace...
Karen Johnson.
I'll, I'll replace, I'll make a motion to replace Counselor Anton Viveras with the Vice President, and will they get back to us within two months?
You bet we will.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second. Mr. President?
One moment.
Yes, sir.
One moment. So, it'll be Vice President?
I, I don't know if I should serve on the same committee as my sister. I think there'd be too much arguments.
I'm quite sure there would be.
Mr. President, I'll be happy to take Counselor Viveras's place, if you'd like.
Okay.
I just don't think it's appropriate.
Okay, then Counselor, Counselor Flynn will take Counselor Viveras's place, and it'll be Counselor Toronto with Counselor Santos and our senior citizens director, Mrs. Call. As the official committee. Yes, Mrs. Call?
Bob, we, I'm just, as a member, we had two seniors.
Then put your seniors back on, too.
Okay, because I know they're anxious to...
I'm trying to get through this. Okay?
It's two months, what's the deadline? Give a date.
Too much.
Too much from tonight?
May.
Too much from tonight?
May 4.
All right?
May 5.
Take the mile. Sick or swimming.
Okay, so we have a motion. Counselors?
I just want to say this, give us some guidelines, tell us what you're looking for, tell us exactly what you're looking for, what you want, and let us do it for you.
What you think, what you think would be a good partnership for us to engage in.
Okay.
Simple. Simple. Okay, so Counselor Toronto, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Santos, along with the senior citizen director and two members of her staff, okay?
No, seniors.
Seniors. Two of, two of her seniors.
Members.
Okay, what do you want it to be? What do you want it to be?
I am requesting to step down from this committee, because on the table where I'm involved right now, where the...
Oh, you don't want to be on this committee?
No, I don't.
Okay, all right. Would somebody like to take Counselor Santos's place on this committee?
I mean, I'll do it as long as it's not a conflict, as long as it's not considered a conflict.
I think the only conflict would be you and your sister, you know?
I think you ought to...
She doesn't, she doesn't, she doesn't take...
Okay. Okay, so, the Vice President, Counselor Toronto, we'll see, see how easy this turns into, a 40-minute conversation about trying to put four people on a committee. Okay, we have the Vice President, we have Counselor Flynn, we have Counselor Toronto on the committee, along with the senior citizen director and two members of this, of the senior citizens center, okay? Do I have a second?
Second.
And they're going to get back to us in two months. All in favor?
Aye.
Wow, that was easy. All right, number 17, continued from February 19, regular meeting of the council, memorandum of the finance director to the town administrator with the closures, RE, contract award, Middletown 019004, consulting services for a senior affordable housing feasibility study.
Motion to receive said memorandum.
Have a motion and a second to receive. All in favor?
Aye.
Conversation.
Mr. President, this is a recommendation from the administration to award a contracted Kirkland Company of Boston, Massachusetts, for consulting services for senior affordability housing, total dollar amount is $22,500. The planner myself did interview Kirkland Company, they have a thorough understanding of what the town is seeking, as far as services that we outlined, and they seem to have an understanding of the project, and we would recommend that the contract be awarded to them.
Go ahead. Counselor Flynn, yeah? And when is the feasibility study going to be done? If we award this, which I'm not going to support, if we award this tonight, how long is that going to take to get back?
Ron, do you remember the timeframe?
What's the point?
Exactly.
Yeah, it was a four-month period to complete the study.
Four months?
Yes.
Okay, okay, four months, all right. Counselor Von Villas.
Yeah, I want to, I want to talk about the scope of this particular feasibility study. I mean, I'm taking a look at this, and it says, these are the tasks they're going to do. Now, mind you, we just appointed a committee that's going to bring that firm information for two months. They're going to take four months to do this. They're going to identify the need, okay? They're going to provide estimates of the number of types and locations of units, and they're actually, they actually say, your current residents might find housing alternatives outside of Middletown, and the reverse is also true. So, they're going to identify the need, which we already know we have, then they're going to identify the funding options. What do they mention? Rhode Island housing. Then they're going to do a market analysis, okay, about the potential for success for nonprofit and/or for profit developments of senior housing. What is this committee going to do? They're going to then identify potential locations. Do we not know our potential locations? Identify potential partners. We talked about that tonight, potential partners, and we have a committee of council people that are going to do that. And then finally, after four months, they're going to make implementation recommendations. I'm sorry, no way am I going to vote for, what is it, $22,000? That's ridiculous.
Only $25,000.
Twenty-five. Twenty-five. I agree, I agree with you 100%. When I, when I, when I read this, I don't believe it.
Me too, Bob, thank you.
Okay, so, having said that, we have a motion to receive. Number 18, any further conversation, guys on that? Counselor Toronto.
I can, I do appreciate all the enthusiasm up here in regards to people are really fired up about this, this affordable housing, so I'm very excited about that, okay? And I'm hoping that other council members will come to the meetings and participate and help with the recommendation. This isn't just a subcommittee we're going to put out there and hope they fail. We're hoping that other people will get involved from the council, come to the meeting.
Can't do that, you have to post it.
Okay, we'll, we'll post it, we'll have a workshop, they proposed a workshop as well. We had meetings with people who have done this, and their recommendation to us is to get a feasibility consultant here, because this is what they've done, they do for a living, and this will get you, get you out of the box, at $22,000. Let me ask you a question, how much, and Sean, I'll ask you this question, how much do you think this investment's going to be overall? If we get the 40 units, we got to get a couple properties, we have to get all this funding, how much do you think this overall budget's going to be, this project?
It depends on how you structure it. Again...
What we've done in the past, or what you see in other communities, what do you think their budget is?
I, I can't answer the question, because like I said earlier, and I think it's evident from the discussion that's happening, is it is unclear whether there'll be a profit or nonprofit vendor and how this will be structured. It, it seems to be something that the council wants to tease out, so...
Is it 1 million, 2 million, 3 million, 5 million?
I provided my answer, again...
Okay, I think it's going to be somewhere around 5 or 6 million dollars.
For the town?
Just overall investment, you're building 40 units, you're going to have to get consultants, engineers, you know, materials, we surveyed the buildings around town, we've got a lot, you know, if we're going to use town buildings, there's definitely...
But I think that's what we're talking about, is trying to find a means that the town is making some contribution of land, not in the form of ownership, so that the burden doesn't fall on the taxpayer or on a senior person that we're trying to protect. I don't, I mean, my understanding of this project is not to spend 5 or 6 million dollars on the backs of a senior or on the backs of a taxpayer, it's to find a developer, whether that's a for-profit or nonprofit developer, to do this with tax credits, so that...
Sure.
Okay.
If we get the resources, that's what we're saying, right? I mean, you're saying if we can get the funding, and that's what we need to find.
Well, that's why I find your question concerning, or...
But I'm just saying, the overall budget, the project's...
I don't understand it, why, why you're asking me to give a number of 6 million dollars, because I, I thought our goal was a contribution of land or to minimize our contribution and put the burden on a third party, and not, not on the taxpayer.
Okay.
So, that's, that's a little bit different of a model.
Okay, so, I guess from a feasibility standpoint, one of the reasons they had recommended it as well is, let's say we didn't use a feasibility consultant, and we get the, the, the subcommittee now is going to have the, the total burden on their back to come back with a recommendation. Well, what happened, we need a consultant on the subcommittee to assist us, to give us the information we need to help make the right recommendation. Where are we going to find that resource? Is that going to be somebody that's going to give it to us for free? I don't think so. The recommendation, what we came back with as a subcommittee, was to get a feasibility consultant and get this off the ground. So, the first request of the subcommittee was to form a feasibility, get a feasibility consultant. Now, if you're going to vote, no, you're not going to provide that, then that's the decision you guys can make. But then if you vote it down, please tell me where we're going to get the resources to, to run this out, because this isn't a part-time type of thing, this is full-time. I'm hoping the town administrator is going to be committed to this in a big way, like we have been to improving our sewer lines and, and stormwater runoff, and all this other type of stuff we're doing around the town. I hope this takes a top priority. It was on everyone's campaign list, and so I'm just looking for some support. And I'm voting for the feasibility consultant, because they're the experts and they're going to help us get out of the gate quickly, so I'm voting for it.
Okay, any further conversation? I could not honestly say that I was supported after I read what they're going to do for $22,500. I think it's a horrible waste of money, horrible waste of money, nothing that we couldn't do ourselves. You're talking about going out there, going out there, what, depending what area, what piece of property we'd like to see it on, what town property we own, they want to, they want to give us information of how it's going to impact the area, how it's going to impact our neighbors, whether there's even a need for it, we're going to go through that, we know there's a need for it. I really don't care how it impacts our neighbors, I care about the town of Middletown, and having affordable housing for our residents in their golden years. But that's my position on it. So, number 18, let's put it to a vote, continued from February 19, regular meeting of the council, resolution of the council, award of the contract, Middletown 019004, a senior affordable housing feasibility study.
Motion to pass said resolution.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass. In favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Madam Clark?
Motion to pass.
What's that?
Motion to pass.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clark. Okay, item number 19, communication of Counselor Toronto, request overview of the recommended changes to the senior and veteran exemptions program and the fiscal impact changes that will have on the town.
Motion to receive said communication.
Second.
Yeah, motion, second to receive, all in favor?
Aye.
Counselor Toronto.
Actually, I, Sean had put something in here, appreciate that, Sean, in regards to the exemptions in the residential property, it was the first reading, we didn't talk about it, but I guess it just flew by of the first reading. So, these are the changes that we requested for the senior exemptions, Sean has it in the document here, so I guess we'll have the second reading on it. What I didn't see in here, Sean, was, did we come up with any estimates of what the additional tax relief would be since we raised the age, or excuse me, the dollar amount to 52,000?
So, the, the item was actually pulled from the docket this evening, the assessor made an error in the calculations, it'll be submitted on the next docket with the fiscal impact statement, so both of those items will be on the upcoming docket.
Is that okay? Any further conversation?
Want to get it right?
Yeah, I agree, we'll have to get it right.
Yep.
All right, item number 20, communication of Counselor Toronto, request an overview of the Ripec project.
Motion to receive said communication.
Second.
Motion, second to receive, all in favor?
Aye.
Counselor Toronto.
At first, I want to apologize for so many things I had in the docket, it's got pushed for like two, we've had so much on the docket, it's gotten pushed and pushed, and that's why this, I have so many things on the docket. But, one of the things that we've done, and I've had a lot of questions from folks, is in regards to tax reform, we talked about the ability to look at the current tax methodology, this was a project, Bob, that we did start two and a half, almost three years ago, when we formed a subcommittee, to take a look at the exploration of it, and the town did pass a resolution at one point to, to, you know, address the current tax methodology, and we explored reasons why we thought that the current tax methodology was not fair, predictable, and people were being taxed based on who moves in next to them, not really what the town needs. So, we actually went to the state house and presented to the Senate and the House, and when we were up there, when we were presenting to the Senate, they told us that they weren't gonna move on it until they got a document back from Ripec. So we brought that back to the council. The council was in agreement with the state, saying they would like to see the Ripec document. That document was requested back in July, August timeframe, and we still don't have an end result. We don't have a report, and I think it was supposed to be a two months, or three months we were supposed to get it back, and we still don't have it to this day. We don't have a delivery, a date for a delivery. And I just think we're losing momentum, and this has dragged out long enough. So I'd like an update from Sean in regards to what is still outstanding, and when can we expect to get the report finished and presented to us?
Sure. So I had sent the, an email to the council at the beginning of February. We complete, so there's, there's two parts of what's going on. There's a, a model that was being constructed, looking at... So there's two parts to the model. So as Dennis pointed out, one part of the model is changing the methodology in which taxes are assessed. The second part of the legislation is a two percent cap on the levy itself. So we built a model that has two components, looking at each of those items. And, and I had spoken about the levy cap at, at a meeting and pointed out, and there was some exception taken about me talking about the dollar amount, but the reality is, the two percent levy cap creates a material shortfall when you look historically on, on what we spend to fund the town and the school, and what we spend versus what we would have been able to spend. And that is concerning to, to the legislation that's proposed. It, it's, it's, it's a large number, and, and that's something that Ripec has asked that we model out to a greater degree. So that's, that's one issue. The second issue is, when we looked at, and, and the council's been provided some draft slides, at, at the impact of the model, there's a shift in tax burden, and, and that's the other thing that we're looking at. So what we see when we look at the model, the first is that tax burden shifts from the residential base to the commercial base, which is concerning, because we already have a split tax rate. Our tax rate for commercial business is already twenty percent higher than our residential. So this, this further compli, burdens the, the commercial tax base. The other observation that's made in this is that when we look at the model, the model itself has a lower tax rate than, lower assessment on the properties than what the market is. So that's a matter that Ripec wanted to look at, because when we look at the commercial model in two thousand twelve, the model assessment actually exceeds the market assessment. So there's some additional research that's going on to understanding those trends, and as has been discussed, is trying to figure out what happens with those trends over the long term, how that, that affects everything. And that, and that's what we're working on right now. So the, the core model's been built. Ripec has asked us to look at the model, changing the escalator, also to bring in the split tax rate. Right now, we've sort of have a, a virgin, we, we have to, we basically take the levies, we calculate a virgin tax rate. Basically, it doesn't have this, the senior exemptions built into it, it doesn't have the split built into it. What, what Ripec wants to see is, when you take these other policies that the town has, how much further do these anomalies sort of, of change? So I think everybody concerned, it, it has taken longer, but it's, it's not as straightforward as taxpayers are gonna pay less and everybody's gonna have a fair assessment. There's, there's actually other things that are happening that Ripec would like to see sort of teased out more before they issue a final report. This is a drastic change. And again, there's, there's two components to this. One is, again, the levy itself, and the other is the assessment. And we're looking at data going back to two thousand three to two thousand eighteen. The goal is to look at this and, you know, model it out for, for a three-to-five-year term. But again, we're seeing trends where, again, the town doesn't raise the same amount of money when you look at the two percent cap on the levy. And then we're looking at the trend of tax burden being moved from the residential base to the commercial base. And then the other piece is just the trend in which, on the residential side, the model assesses property lower for their residential than the model rate, but on the commercial side, the model rates higher than the, the actual assessment of the property, so... And those are policy issues that, once they're better understood, Ripec would be able to comment on from a policy standpoint.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Sean, has he given you a date when he'll have this completed?
We are trying to finish up the database this week. We had an issue with the senior exemptions. I, I would hope in the next, next, next few weeks, we would be done with this. I, I want to be done with this more than anyone, trust me. But as, you know, we go through, and again, I, we break the, the community down into neighborhoods, we move from neighborhood to neighborhood to see what's going on in those. It's, 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 again, trying to make sure that the report from Ripec is comprehensive, so that not only the council, but the residents understand how this will impact them and, and the businesses that we have in the community.
No, I agree. It's, it's, it's really, you know, taking a look at the current tax methodology and making sure that there's no hardship or anything that could trick us up in regards to the new, the new solution that we're looking at. And it's not new, it's just really, it's, it's making the current system more fair and predictable. I really don't think that people's taxes on their homes should be unpredictable. Right now, it's unpredictable. We, that last reassessment that we just had, the town did not need any additional capital to run the town, but we did the assessment anyways. And because someone else's house didn't appraise more than somebody else's house, and this is a paper thing, right? This pa, this house didn't appreciate more than eight percent, so they got a tax decrease. This person's property increased more than twelve percent, so they got a tax increase. So all we did was move the financial burden. I'd like someone to come up here and tell us why they think that's fair.
But I think, and, and again, this goes back to why it's taking time. So that's, that's on the residential side. You have this, this change between the residential properties. But the other thing the model is showing us is that, based on what's happened in the community since two thousand twelve, the commercial taxpayers would actually be being assessed on their properties at a rate that's greater than what the market says their properties are worth. So those are the type of issues we also need to look at, because, because that's an inequity also that is created by this, this new proposal, so...
I, I agree, and I'm hoping we do, I wanna get it right. But right now, we have a shrinking, this is a nationwide thing. This isn't just Middletown. This is Rhode Island. This is New Jersey. This is New York. The population is moving out, the people are moving out, because it's becoming unaffordable to live in Middletown. You can talk to young families, you can look at the senior survey, that current tax methodology is affecting our town and affecting the state of Rhode Island, where people cannot afford to live here. So if we don't change it, okay, let's say we don't change it, then we can, we can just look at where we are today and look at the houses that are being bought because people are moving out and other people building summer homes, and we talk about, you know, people being forced out. Do you know the folks on the other side of, the south side of Purgatory Road? Their average taxes went up twenty to twenty-five percent. We're seeing sales of properties of six hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars on that side of Purgatory. Do you think our long-term residents can afford that change in that neighborhood? No. It's gonna look like Tuckerman Ave. And it's just gonna go that way. So we need to make a change or just settle in for what we already have. So I'm just excited. I do wanna get this report back, so we all can look at it as a community. We have a chance to make a big change in Middletown and help our seniors and help long-term residents. That's the goal. And make it affordable to live here, make it predictable. So thank, I would appreciate your time. Sean, thank you for your help, and I'm hoping that this is done in a couple weeks.
Antonio Viveras, Mr. Viveras.
Thank you, Mr. President. Antonio Viveras, one-ten Indian Hill Road. When the committee proposed this, and we sat down with Mr. Brown, Mr. Brown and the tax assessor, and we said, how do you tax, how do you tax businesses? Well, businesses is taxed the same as residential. And then you add on the tangible property, the computers, the desks, the, the special tools, that's, that's, that's separate. But the business gets, property gets taxed the same as residential. So we said, if you kept the assessment and raised the tax rate to a cap of two percent on everybody, the increase is the same for residential as it was or will be for resident, for businesses. Mr. Brown introduced CPI. He introduced increase in the assessment, and after you did that, the water got all muddied, as far as I was concerned. It's worked in other states. You set, you freeze the tax, the tax assessment, and you increase the tax rate or the tax levy on everybody, the same percentage. Everybody gets treated the same. If somebody does a major renovation to their house, that, over a certain amount, that will trigger a, a, an assessment. The house gets sold, when the new owner comes in, the house gets reassessed, and his taxes get assessed to the new, gets charged a new assessment. So I don't know where you get, you're changing, you're, you're taking the, the responsibility from the taxpayer to businesses and all this, all this other stuff. You leave the assessment alone, is what we said. You raise the tax rate a cap of two percent on everybody. If the town needs three percent, you go the same route as you do now, if you have to exceed the four percent cap for the state. And the people have the final say, they'll vote on it. And if you have to increase the percentage, a percent, you tell the people what you're using it for, and if you have to take a bond out, when the bond is paid, the tax rate drops that one percent. It goes back to the people. It doesn't turn to the free money to use for something else. I don't know what the problem is. The whole problem, the, the board has got money with the CPI, because they didn't want the cap, the assessment, property assessment, to remain the same. We were still gonna have the revow, so the property assessment, property value would increase. So as far as the state is concerned, the, the, the total worth of Middletown will continue to increase, so we could continue borrowing up to three percent of what we were worth. But the people will not be driven out of their house. I've sat down with Mr. Brown, he's having something for, for Sept, September, then it was November, then it was December. Now, we're, now we're in March. Why? Because of the CPI and the increase on the, on the levy. Instead of doing it on a, you need, you need a two percent raise, the way you do ta, the way taxes and other, other tax assessors would tell me. You told, you tell the tax assessor, we have to raise five hundred thousand dollars in taxes. He goes on, he figures the figure, and he says, you gotta raise the, you gotta raise the tax rate one and a half, or two, two and a half, or three percent, whatever it is, and you raise it. I don't know why we made mountains out of molehills, as far as I'm concerned. I sat back, and I watched it, and I watched it, and I watched it, and we testified up into the State House, and we got blindsided with Ripec, that put it, that put a kibosh to everything. And now we're, we're transferring the, the, the responsibility from the taxpayer to the businesses. No, you're not, because you're gonna tax them the same percent. If you go back to raising the, for the tax rate, increasing the levy, and leave the, the assessment alone, instead of worrying about the CPI, and, oh, the assessment is going up. No, it's not going up, but the tax rate is. And everybody's getting treated the same. That was the whole thing. Somebody's assessment doesn't go up thirty-five percent, and somebody else on the other side goes up five percent. And then you take the money from this guy, and whoa, we've got too much money. We have to lower the tax rate, a dollar sixty-two? When everybody could have had an increase of two percent. I don't get it. I just don't get it. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I can respond?
Go ahead.
The CPI component is part of the legislation that was approved by the town council. It's part of the legislation the committee put forward, which is the California model, and that, that is the way it's written, and that's the way the model's been constructed. So I think this illustrates the value of the model, to understand what happens when you take the legislation and apply it to what happens in the community. You know, the data that we're using reflects two revows, it reflects a recession, it reflects a period of growth. It represents the sales that we see in the town of Middletown. It reflects the mix of property that we have in the town of Middletown. And I think the results that we're seeing and the questions we're asking are exactly what we need to investigate before we make such a drastic change. There is a shift in the way taxes are assessed, and there will be a shift in tax burden. That, that has always been understood. It will be between residential neighborhoods, it will be between different parts of the tax base. And again, I think that's why this is taking some time in order to investigate all of those things. I, I can say, one of the models that is being run right now is, is running it without the two percent increase in the assessments. And the way that works is, if, if I don't sell my property, I would see a two percent increase in my, my assessment. And the, the reasoning behind that in the mo, the legislation is so that it's an assumption, it's an arbitrary assumption, it was an arbitrary assumption made in California, that the assessment of my property would track along with the annual increase that I would normally see in the property. However, the way the legislation works, if Peter was to buy the house that he lives in right now, that would become his new assessment. So there's nothing unusual, and again, this is something that was discussed with the, the committee members when myself and the solicitor, the solicitor mostly drafted the legislation that was passed by the council and, and forwarded to the state, so... But again, I think the model's critical to understand how this actually works in practice. The other thing which Ripec's looking at, and I think this is critical, Mr. Viveras represents, if you need some money, you just go ask the taxpayers for it. There's, it is exactly what you said. You said, you take it to the voters for a vote, and that's something that we need to look at also, because simply asking the taxpayers to vote on new money doesn't necessarily new money comes. And that's, that's a large, large part of this, that, that Ripec needs to advise you on. You know, when, we need to look at town meetings and look at when a school department needs more money, or a fire department needs more money, especially when you're capping the amount of money two percent lower than what the state, you know, caps are spending at, how likely is it gonna happen? You know, is this a recipe to put the community into bankruptcy, or is this actually a model that helps you control cost? And I think there's enough communities in Rhode Island, and there's enough votes taken for, for budget overrides, to give us an idea of whether or not that's a practical idea or not. Again, you know, rather than, you know, Ripec is a good tool, I think, to do that research objectively, so we don't end up with a, a sparring match, but the bottom line or the representation, that's an easy thing to do. I, I don't, I don't necessarily agree with that. I think it's something that the council has to critically look at, because getting that answer is going to be really important when it comes to evaluating the, the long-term ability to sustain a program like this.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Mr. President?
Counselor Toronto.
Sean, the information you had forwarded me went back, let's say, twenty years, and the last ten years, I think what I averaged was that the town was averaging a two percent increase over the last ten, per year, somewhere around two percent. The ten years prior to that, I think it was an average of five percent. So there was a point where taxes were being, on an average for ten years, going up five percent a year. And, you know, when there's not a reassessment, that gets leveled across all, all taxpayers. So the one, so if the town needed two percent this year, everybody's taxes would go up two percent, right across the board. But what happens with the reassessment is, now we go and we shuffle everyone's value of their properties, and I can tell you why that process doesn't work so well. of their properties. And I can tell you why that process doesn't work so well in regards to the reassessments. But then we're just moving the dollars around to say, who's going to pay the, who's going to pay more this time? So I think, I think it's, you know, we need to look at this and how it's gonna, the changes are gonna affect, you know, giving people more predictability. I don't think, you know, people will be so concerned about who moves next door. And at the same time, I know I had asked, are we going to look at going 10 years forward if we leave the same plan in place? Because that's the other thing we've got to look at. We can't just look behind us. We've got to say, if we keep the same plan in place today that we have, what's the Middletown going to look like? Is he, is Ripec looking at that as well? Like, we can continue to see big houses. We can continue to see unpredictable taxes. We can continue to see a decline in population. We can see that young families can't live here any longer. I mean, is he gonna?
We are looking at that.
Is he gonna look at that, too?
Like I said, when we look at the model that's proposed, the assessment for commercial property gets inverted in which the proposed model, the assessments exceed the market value of the properties.
Okay.
So we are looking at those issues. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And.
Yep. All right, item number 21. Memorandum of Counselor Flynn, RE, Town Volunteer Appointment Procedure.
Motion to receive said memorandum.
Yeah, motion second to receive. All in favor?
Aye.
Counselor Flynn.
Thank you. This was, is a suggestion because we have had some great discussion and ideas and things kicking around on the town volunteer appointment process. So however, not many, actually, nothing has gotten decided or come to fruition from all those conversations. So I thought I'd put it in front of the Town Council to, to see if they wanted to put together a subcommittee to discuss it and then come to the full council with the best ideas that would work and be legal.
Okay, any conversation? Anybody want to weigh in? Do you want to put that in form of a motion?
Sure.
Okay.
Let's see, I make a motion for discussion for the council to create a subcommittee to update the town volunteer appointment procedures based on council conversations of December 17th, 2018, January 22nd, and February 4th, 2019. And I would suggest it be made up of the most vocal members of the council, which would be Barbara Von Villas, Rick Lombardi, and myself.
No, thank you.
I decline.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion second.
Discussion.
Discussion.
You said illegal. Are we doing something that's illegal without present procedure?
No, but in the conver, can I, can I answer? In the conversation, I remember we were floating around questions to be added to the application. And the solicitor said, oh, you can't do that for legal reasons. So again, to get it in a subcommittee where we vet those kinds of things first might be better than doing it here.
Okay, we have a motion. It's been seconded. Any further conversation? Form a subcommittee to look into how we interview people. All those in favor, signify by saying aye or raising a hand.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Item number 22. Communication of the Accounting Manager with Enclosures, RE, Quarterly Tax Collector's Report, AS 1231, 2018, Town of Middletown.
Motion to receive said communication and report.
Second.
Motion second to receive. All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Tonight, I'm here to go over the report of your tax collections for the first six months of 2019 fiscal year. And we compare it to the prior two fiscal years, which would be 2018 and 2017. If you look on the first section of your report, that's the current year, and you go to the very right corner, right column is your collection rate. Under the total collection rate for the first six months is 52.34 percent. So you're over half collected for the first six months. And in the second section, if you, it's comparing it to the prior year. If you look at the total in the second section, under the collection rate, it was at 55.89. So compared to last year, we're lower on the collection rate for the first six months. Last year, I was here telling you that it would be an elevated year because last year we had the tax change law. So people were paying their property taxes ahead of normal time. So that's why last year is elevated. And we, when we compare the tax collection rate to two years ago, it's 52.95 percent, which is, it's pretty much the same as this year. And on the last section, we tell you about the prior year collections and how we did. So in the first six months, we collected 43 percent of your outstanding real estate, motor vehicle, and tangible taxes, and 92.5 percent of your sewer maintenance. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
I got one.
Oh.
I'm sorry. Mark, what is the amount of revenue that's coming from new house development in Middletown? In other words, someone comes in, buys a piece of property, remodels it or knocks it down, comes back in, and we have to reassess the tax?
I would have to ask the tax assessor.
Or the sale of properties.
To get that information.
Because that's new revenue to the town.
And if you're talking about new on the, on the tax roll subsequent to the assessment, that would be in the, in the, the new adjustment, the bill adjustments, the new bills, 13,000.
Yeah, I didn't know if it was a new bill, bills adjustments.
Well, a lot can go into that. It depends what timeframe you're looking at.
I would just point out that.
If you're looking on the current assessment, I can have this assessor run the report for that, or subsequent to the levy, I can, I'll have to look for that.
Because we have building permit. I know there's, it's in there as a budget, but there's building permits. The house is done. It gets re-taxed. It gets reassessed. I'm just curious if, you know, what that number is, because that's all new revenue to the town. We don't know what that is. We budget for it at the beginning of the year, but it has been a very positive marketplace. And so over the last year, we've seen a lot of construction, you know, a lot of sales of homes. I'm just kind of curious, are we on budget for that? Is that, and where that was in this, in this chart?
We build a collection rate, an uncollectible piece into that, but that's different than what you're saying. So we base it on the levy, and then we build in a collection rate.
Okay.
Okay, any further questions? Thank you, Mark. Item number 23. Memorandum of the Middletown Prevention Coalition Director Through a Town Administrator Upcoming Grant Submissions.
Motion to receive said memorandum.
Second.
A motion to second to receive. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
The Prevention Coalition is applying for two different grants. The first one is to participate in the Health Equity Zones. The funding range is, as it says, 20 to $150,000. And the match required for that is 10 percent in-kind. So that would be basically salaries and things that we're paying for already. It's not an additional amount of money. The second is the Stop Action Grant, Sober Truth of Preventing Underage Drinking. Again, the award could be up to $50,000. And for that grant, there is no match requirement. So under the town's policy, we're asking the council to pass a motion to authorize those grant submissions.
That's a no-brainer.
Yes.
It's a no-brainer on both of them.
Just want to make sure we follow the policy.
Any conversation? Okay, we've got a lot of hands just popped up. Counselor Lombardi, show number one.
You know, having been a former police officer, the Prevention Coalition, the first grant really targets at-risk, you know, kids and families. And it's a good support mechanism. And I can't tell you how, you know, from a former police officer's standpoint, having built youth in our community and a coach, you know, these are the, these are the kind of people who focus the price. You know, the ones that run the bridge, they go one way, they go the other way. If you help them, you can bump them the other way, the good side of things. So it's money well spent. And the DFC piece of it, again, is good money that they spend. And it's, it's well worked with, working with our kids, making good choices when it comes to drugs, and they're thriving and, and making sure that the message gets out there. So I can't say how big it is for us to support this. And the other piece of this is that it's going to come a point in time when, you know, the Prevention Coalition is a town, a town department, and funding at some point, federal funding's going to run out. We're going to have to try to figure out ways to keep them alive. And this is one of the ways you do that, by looking for grants and things like that to keep you, you know, sustainable and keeping the message out there to our kids and working with the families and the schools and whatnot. So we can't do enough to help the future of our community and the future of our communities' kids.
Okay, Counselor Flynn.
Yes, and as the new liaison to the Prevention Coalition, taking Counselor Lombardi's place, I, I, from what few visions I've had of this group, they, they are doing tremendous work, and they have a lot of great players as part of their board. I was able to go and observe a lunch and learn program at the high school, and I attended their volleyball game for Project Purple, and went to the motivational assembly that they put on at God A. They are doing some really, really good works. My only question, because I'm new, is the first grant does have a matching piece. It looks like we would pay anywhere from 2 to 15,000. Is this an annual that we budget for this?
No, it's an in-kind grant. So we would use other funds that are already budgeted for to represent the match. So it wouldn't be additional money.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yeah.
If you would, please.
Please authorize the grant submission, please.
Motion to authorize the grant submission.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, motion second to authorize a grant. Any further conversation? Here and then. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 24. Boards and Committees. Appointment of four members to the planning board. One member to complete a term expiring February 2020, and three members, terms expire in February 2022.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Arthur S. Weber, John L. Schumoe, Michael J. Fenton, and Anton C. Viveros for the planning board positions.
Okay, is that one motion? You want to break them up?
I would put that in one motion. There were seven original candidates, and we lost two because they did not interview. That left us with five. So I, those were, from my assessment, I've, I've got a veteran of the board, and based on a lot of the input we got in our emails, went with one who is, got experience with the board and is a new name, and someone who's experienced in the town, and then a new volunteer.
Okay, so that's, you're making a motion?
I am.
Okay, do we have a second on that motion? Is there a second?
Can you read the motion, please?
What's that?
Could you read the motion, please?
The motion is to appoint Arthur S. Weber, Johnny Schumoe, and Michael Fenton, and Anton Viveros to the planning board. That's the motion. Okay. Is there a second to that motion? Here and then. Motion fails. Do I have any other motions?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate for the one, for the one member to term completing, completed term expiring February 2020, I'd like to nominate Michael J. Fenton.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second to nominate Michael J. Fenton. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint three members, terms expiring February 2022. I'd like to appoint William J. Nash Jr., Arthur S. Weber Jr., and John L. Schumoe.
Would you do, could you do those separately? Because I'm going to have to recuse, and I don't want to have to recuse at all.
Would you like to withdraw that motion, Vice President?
Motion withdrawn. The motion to nominate three members, terms expiring February 2022. Motion to nominate William J. Nash Jr.
Second.
We have a motion second, William J. Nash Jr. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, opposed.
Motion to nominate Arthur S. Weber Jr.
Second.
We have a motion second to nominate Arthur S. Weber Jr. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to nominate John L. Schumoe.
Second.
And motion second to nominate John L. Schumoe. Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We have one opposition?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so the new members of the planning board appointed were, I just want to get this straightened out. The three-year terms, it was William Nash, Arthur Weber, and John Schumoe, and to the term expiring in February 2020, it was Michael Fenton, correct?
Correct.
Item number 25. Appointment of one member to the zoning board review, second alter, to complete a term expiring April 2020.
Mr. President, motion to appoint Andrew Bacon.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion that's been seconded to appoint Andrew Bacon. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion to adjourn said meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.